Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, um, we've got a couple, one housekeeping item that we need to do first. Um, it's been asked for Mr. Rogers to have his city manager's report at the beginning of the regular meeting right before communications from citizens. So is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with the revision to have Mr. Rogers' city manager report before communications from citizens?
Send me a second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
I could not hear.
Yeah, we're ado- we are adopting a revised agenda to allow, um, Mr. Rogers to do his city manager report before communications from citizens.
To do communications from citizens, not before I vote on anything, you have to do a vote for me to be able to vote.
His remote participation, he's right.
Oh, okay.
For his remote participation should come first.
Okay, all right, at this time, is there a motion to allow Counselor Holloway to participate remotely?
Send me a second.
All right, at this time, Mr. Holloway, can you state for the record where you're conducting the meeting from and why you're asking to participate remotely?
Uh, yes, I'm in route and incoming into the world following for the meeting.
On the way to the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so at this time, do we have a motion to adopt a revised agenda to allow the city manager's report to begin right before communications from citizens?
Send me.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Um, let me add for a question, Mr. Bissett, if we want to make this a permanent change, can we just make this?
Uh, under the current rules, it can't be a permanent change. The rules actually set out what the, what the order of, of meetings is on each agenda, and so as much pain as it is, it has to be done each meeting.
Okay.
Until we change.
Until we change the rules, okay, all right, is there any other discussion?
You have any questions?
Okay.
Um, I, I did, I need a clarification on exactly what was being asked because I can't hear.
Hold it down.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So the motion on the floor is to adopt a revised agenda, and that's to allow Mr. Rogers to do his city manager's report before communications from citizens.
Uh, I also ask for, uh, in addition to that, in, in light of hearing this and seeing this letter from the, uh, from the, as presented the legal city manager, Dr. Manker, to have this in discussion tonight because it is a ve- very important thing, so I ask that counsel would add that also to the agenda.
It's under the revised closed session, um, motion that he's provided us with.
Okay, I, I wasn't able to see the, I can't hear.
Okay, seeing no other lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, at this time, um, I move that we go into closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 29 and 8 to discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, real estate contract discussions, unsolicited offer on city-owned real estate, and 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, school board and architecture review board, and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 demand letter.
Send me.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Come out of closed session.
Send me.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
This is.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Yes.
You messed me up.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, certification, please.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712D where only public business matters one lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements and two identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in the closed meeting.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Here. I mean, yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
You are tired.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Certification passes seven to zero.
Okay, at this time, do we have a motion to extend the meeting until we finish CCR1?
Send me.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, at this time, is there a motion to appoint, uh, Ms. Jennifer Lowery to the Architecture Review Board? Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Bissett, uh, city council needs your ruling as parliamentarian under Rule 101. What is the status of agenda items SB1, the motion to reconsider, and SB2, the motion to terminate, uh, the former city manager's employment from the May 1st special meeting? Was the vote taken on each of these items effective?
Mr. Mayor, uh, on the question of SB1, the motion to reconsider, that motion was untimely and thus ineffective, the, uh, motion and vote on SB2, whether to terminate the city manager's employment contract was effective.
Okay, all right, at this time, uh, is there a motion to overrule the parliamentarian?
Yes.
Okay, motion, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Stokes. Roll call, please.
I was about to discuss my last.
Well, for this item, there's no discussion.
It's a motion, so there's no discussion.
Correct, for this, for this particular type of motion, correct. Mr. Bissett.
Mr. Mayor, for, uh, for points of order, where, which this, this council's a point of order and for requests of staff, procedural items like this are not agenda items, they don't, they don't have a discussion period under the rules.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis.
Sorry, so, yeah, so the motion is whether to overrule the parliamentarian.
Counselor Day.
No.
Counselor Stokes.
What was the question?
Yeah, so it's to overrule the parliamentarian.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
To overrule, yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
No.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
No. All right, uh, we are moving on to our work session for tonight. Uh, first up is Ms. Jordan with the CSA supplemental.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, this agenda item is for a supplemental for a CSA budget adjustment for fiscal year '25 in an amount of 1.5 million, which roughly of, um, of that, 360,000 would come from the city, which is, um, 76% is reimbursed by the state. It would increase the budget appropriation for '25, and I also want to apologize because under timing says August 31st, 2024, and it should be 2025.
And I know that this is a, a work session item, and this is going to be brought back for a vote in two weeks. Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, um, does council have any questions, uh, on this work session item? Okay, um, I have one question as it relates to CSA.
Yes.
Um, there was an issue, uh, thank you, um, there was an issue, uh, that was brought up to council's attention, um, that a former member of, uh, council, Ms. Pelham, uh, discovered that had it not been for her discovering it and reporting it to the city, you know, we would have been fined, you know, a considerable amount of money. Was, we still have not heard anything back on that? We have not been fined?
No, we have not been fined. We do not see any financial implications in regards to the audit. Majority of the paperwork that was outstanding that, um, the auditor was looking for has been located, but they are still in the process of CSA, CSA audit currently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, what else would I like? Counselor Holloway? Okay, all right, moving on to number two for the ordinance for the deputy circuit clerk, clerk court position.
This is an ordinance the General Assembly has approved, Deputy City Clerk for position for the 120 Circuit Court Clerk Office of the Commonwealth of Virginia. This will be available for July 1st, 2025. The city has provided an ordinance to be adopted to allow, um, the Circuit Court to approve, to, um, receive this position from the General Assembly.
Okay.
State funds of $51,509, general funds of $18,061. This is a comp board position. The city is only, um, responsible for the, a small part of the fringe benefits.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Jordan?
Would it, can you repeat what this, can you, can you repeat that last part you just stated?
Yes, ma'am, this is a comp board position, so the state pays majority of the salary and some of the fringe. The city's responsibility would only be about $18,000. The rest of it would come from the state, about $55,000.
And you can, and you can afford?
Yeah, it's okay, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, this is being brought up in two weeks. Yeah, all right, uh, last one.
Okay, the last one is the state has required that the city adopt an ordinance in order to provide social services with bonuses for, beginning in December. This is completely state funds that will come to the city. There is no general funds allocated for this in an amount of $44,761.
Boy, they're being generous.
Yeah, no, something like that. But they require the city to adopt an ordinance.
Seeing no lights, thank you, Ms. Jordan.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to our regular meeting. Go ahead and call this regular meeting to order, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Okay, at this time, we will have the prayer by Reverend Blow, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag by myself.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you. Thank you for this day, thank you for this meeting, thank you for the city council. Father, we ask now, Lord, that you would have your way in this meeting. Father, you said if we would acknowledge you in all our ways, you would direct our path. So, Father, we're asking you, Lord God, though we are in a time, Lord God, of unrest, we ask that peace would be in this room, and that you would give everyone a calmness, Lord God, that they can get what they need done, and that things will happen the way you want them to happen. Father, we just thank you for your presence, we thank you for the people here, and we thank you, Lord, that you will have your way. We honor you now in the precious name of the Father, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have already, uh, adopted our regular meeting agenda with the revision from earlier today. Uh, at this time, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Send me.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Uh, discussion, Counselor Holloway.
I want to invoke the, now my, I want to invoke now my motion for, uh, personal privilege. Uh, for the three minutes, I believe council's set, well, I don't know if it's set for this meeting as well, but, uh, I'm, I'm gonna enter my personal privilege. Uh, we, we skipped over. We skipped over, uh, we skipped over the matter, can you set the three minutes? We skipped over a matter without council's ability to be able to speak on the letter that was received from, um, Dr. Manker's attorney here tonight, and we skipped right over it. Council persons allowing their vote in without clearing understanding. Um, on the meeting that night, there was a motion for reconsideration, and we were told by a counselor, uh, the city attorney, that the motion, motion to consideration was offset, but they lined it up so that they had a separate motion, um, and said that their second motion, instead of being a reconsideration, was considered a renewed motion that would then allow for them to bring up, um, the same vote again without the same consequences. Uh, when I asked that question that night, it was very specific that this was a thing of reconsideration, and so all of council, well, not all of, I know Counselor Harris, Counselor Stokes and I, uh, were not privy of this setup, basically, um, so that they could go forward in however they wanted to move in regarding getting rid of the city manager and the city clerk. Very scary time. Uh, I also spoke on the, uh, also in that letter, though, is the, uh, part of conflict of interest, which the city attorney opine to speak towards, because, uh, indeed, it is my belief that there is conflict of interest there, and I want to make the public aware of that. The mayor stated last time that there were some personnel issues, and I've gotten permission from both of them, both Williams and Manker, uh, but there's no personnel issues that was on file that caused us to fire them, uh, at all. As a matter of fact, the clerk actually got a good letter, email, um, though neither one of them actually ended up having their evaluation done. They skipped the evaluations for both of them. But the city clerk had received from now Vice Mayor Joyner, a letter commending the turnaround that she did to the office, so, I got 22 seconds, uh, commended her in her job. So again, personnel issue was nowhere near, um, the spark of that, because if they had a personnel issue, they would have let him go, uh, for that reason. That's all I have to say until we speak later on the matter. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Stokes.
I would like to take this opportunity, um, to address, uh, consent agenda item one.
Okay.
Minutes, um, to Ms. Stacy Jordan. Um, wanted to publicly apologize to you, um, for perhaps the way I may have come off at the last meeting, um, and I wanted to make that publicly known, that after some discussion, I had more of an understanding of what you were presenting.
Thank you, yes, ma'am, thank you, counsel.
And, and to our interim city manager, I would like to thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to go over the agenda items with me and to help me to understand more so on what my role is on the agenda. So, thank you.
Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis. Counselor Day. Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway.
This is to adopt the consent agenda.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to information and presentations, Mr. Sanderson.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, Jimmy Sanderson with that important company. We are a financial advisor to, uh, to the city. Um, we, and, and Mr. Mayor, I can do this however you like, there's some materials in the front that I, I kept in here, a little repetitive from what we did before, but if you wanted to sort of go through that quickly, I'm happy to do it. Counsel has seen that, but the, the primary, um, goal here is to look at our now FY21 audit, which has been completed, run that through our, um, our modeling as it relates to Moody's in particular, and the rating, to see how we came out versus, uh, earlier in the year when we looked at FY20. But, um, so I'll leave it to you, Mr. Mayor, um, but I'm happy to go stop if anybody wants me to stop and go through it even more carefully. But the, the first page that's up there now shows the outstanding debt, uh, of the city. We left it as of, uh, June 2024. Obviously, our, this new fiscal year isn't quite done yet, but we're getting ready to, to end that, and you can see that, that, that we're gonna pay about three and a half million dollars of our debt off in FY25, which is, is currently ending. So, um, originally, it was about 55.9 million, now there's, um, right around that $30 million left outstanding. The next slide, um, is really some background material on what the purpose of the bond issues were. There've been a number of refundings, refinancing of bond issues over time as well, and so it's a little bit of a puzzle that you've got to put together to go see what the original, uh, original bond issues were, were done for and what the projects were, um, and you can see that on the, on the next page as well, uh, the purpose of the original issuances, uh, going back to, uh, looks like 1992 might be the earliest one there. Um, flip to the next page, this is your tax-supported debt, so you'll hear me talk in a minute about some utility debt, but this is debt that's paid, uh, intended to be paid from the general fund, um, currently as of, again, uh, with, uh, June of 2024, about 32.6 million of debt outstanding on the general fund side, and you can see on the left graphically, um, it's, it's a little bit of a step down, and that's typical in a local government, uh, type of debt, where it steps down periodically over time. That allows you to borrow debt in the future and sort of layer it in without having an impact on you from a budget perspective. Um, one of the things to point out down below in the bullets, uh, since '15, we've paid down, uh, 30.5 million of debt, if you include this fiscal year we're in, we've paid down over 34 million of our debt. Our current payout ratio is 86%. Uh, that's how much debt we pay off over the next 10 years. Anything north of 60% is a very strong payout ratio would be, uh, be showing that you're paying your debt rapidly. Flip to the next page, um, this is something the city has always done, is, is broken out your, what I'll call your general governmental debt versus your school debt. Um, we have borrowed in the past, we've, we've made specific increases in our real estate tax rates to pay for school debt, uh, over time, so we broke that up for you here, so you can see that. The general fund debt, um, is, uh, 23.8 million of principal outstanding. What we've got listed is the school debt, um, about 8.8 million of principal outstanding, uh, both payable, um, you know, between now and the, the last, last FY2039. Next slide, um, this is a little bit of your rating history. Um, again, um, going back to early 2010, we started getting some upgrades. The city was doing well in the rating, from a rating perspective. We got as high as the, the double A category from Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch, and you can see there, starting in, in '17 and '18, that's when our ratings start to be withdrawn. The primary reason for that was the inability, um, for the rating agencies to actually review our timely audits, so they didn't have timely material to review, so they withdrew the ratings. The next slide, um, this is when we start getting to utilities. Uh, there's two types of utility bonds that we have, uh, one that we call the, the regional wastewater bonds, which relate to the, um, the regional facility that includes the industrial, um, companies as well as the city. There's about 11 million debt outstanding there, and then there's what we call the city sewer, uh, system bonds, really the collection side in particular, um, paid for from the collection side, and that is, uh, right around 20 million of debt outstanding there, and we're gonna, we'll, we'll break that a little bit more for you. If you flip to the next page, this is the regional system, um, that drops down considerably, um, in the next, next couple of years, beginning in FY27, goes from, uh, almost a million dollars of debt service down to $320,000 of debt service from there, from that. Um, so a pretty big drop in, in their, their budgeted debt service, uh, in the coming years. Flip to the next slide, um, this is the, the city's sewer system debt. This is leveled debt service, pretty typical in a revenue pledge, unlike the, the general fund side where you have that step down in debt service. Uh, a utility credit often has leveled debt service, uh, that helps us from, in particular from a budgeting perspective, your rates, you're looking at, you're not having to move them up and down if your debt service, uh, moves up or down in any given year. So, about almost 20 million outstanding, uh, payable between now and FY, FY43. This system on the next page also had credit ratings, um, that we got in 2000, 2009, 2010, we first issued bonds for this, this credit, um, and they initially started out in the, in the, the single A category, A1, A+, uh, and actually double A minus from Fitch. Again, those ratings were ultimately withdrawn, um, in 2017, 2018, again, due to, um, a lack of, uh, timely audits and the ability for the rating agencies to, um, to review the credit. Go two pages ahead, um, this was the last, last, a couple of bullets from the last, uh, rating report from Moody's, um, again, we were, we were in a strong position then, um, I don't think we need to go through this, but, but oftentimes, the rating report that you get from the rating agencies will tell you what, what you need to do to make your rating go up, and what would, what would happen, um, to make your rating go down, and there's a couple of things in the bullets that may give you a little bit of sense of that, but again, that was back from 2017. Jump to the next page, this is the one where I wanted to give a, a little bit of, of guidance on what the rating agencies look at when they, uh, rate you. This has changed a little bit, um, back in 2022, Moody's changed their, uh, the rating methodology, really with a scorecard, and you'll see that scorecard here in a second, but they're looking at a number of factors, but at the top right, maybe a little bit easier to look at graphically, uh, the rating agency will, will, will put a scorecard together and come up with a numerical number that translates to a, a rating for you, and well, I'll show you that in a moment, but from there, they have notching factors that can make it go up or down, um, there are some other considerations, it's a little bit of a black box, uh, right, so we can come up with the scorecard and gives you a specific number, but they're gonna give themselves a little bit of a gray area where they can adjust you up or down, and ultimately to come to a, an issuer rating. There, there are four primary areas that the rating agencies look at, and some of these you, as a council and, and a city, have more control over than others. Uh, the economy is one that, that you don't have a lot of control over quickly at least, um, but there's the institutional framework, that's, um, actually the same for all Virginia cities, they all score the same, it's just the way we're set up. It's just the way we're set up from a state legal perspective. Your financial performance, um, and then the last one is your leverage. So all of those go to ultimately to what your your rating is. And if you flip to the next page, they even go so far as in the scorecard to to put percentages on these. So there, each each subcategory within uh, the economy on this page, for example, resident income is ten percent. Full value per capita, looking at the total value of your real estate uh, per capita is ten percent. Economic growth is another ten percent. So that's what I was talking about. Those are ones that you really can't move the needle on those certainly quickly as a as a governing body. Uh, over time, certainly you could take actions that could move it. But the other ones are um, uh, financial performance. Again, they're looking at what's your available reserves. We've, you you've got a rainy day fund. Uh, that's something that the city's had for a long time. Uh, that's very good, and that that gives the rating agencies comfort that you've got uh, funds to pay uh, your obligations. You also have an additional unassigned fund balance as well. So historically, you've had that rainy day fund, you know, in the five million dollar range or so. And then in addition to that, you've had unassigned fund balance, which again, isn't isn't set up to pay for anything in particular. So that gives you some flexibility as well. And on the debt side, you're going to see here in a minute that, you know, you you have been paying your debt down. Uh, and compared to others, you're going to be in a good good stead uh, with the amount of debt that you have outstanding versus other localities. So let me jump to the scorecard on the next slide. And this is from from our our twenty twenty, which I think we talked about it maybe in January, February timeframe, uh, when we got our FY twenty uh, CAFR, uh, ACFR now back. But again, each of those larger categories are shown over on the left. Uh, we literally take your your audit uh, with with information that's available and put it here. Some of it's just what's the latest economic data that's available as well. And so we've put the the most to date economic data in here. And you see at the at the far right that you ultimately come up with um, a score, which I believe is, gosh, it's really small, a three point three one is the number. Uh, three point three one translates, if you go down to the bottom right, there's that gold band. Uh, so if you come between a two point five and a three point five range, your scorecard rating is is double A two, very strong rating. Um, there is double A two, and then there's double A one above that. And then you're into the triple A rating, which is the highest rating uh, that you have. The Commonwealth of Virginia is is triple A rated. Um, and so that's where you were in twenty twenty. And flip to the next page, and we'll go into a little bit more detail here uh, for for members of council and the audience. But the next slide is twenty-one. Um, a very similar outcome, uh, three point two nine, lower is better, um, by the way. So slightly lower than you were in twenty twenty, uh, very marginally, uh, however. But you still score out in that double A two category. Um, and if you look just at the at the gra- at the graphic generally, you can see in green where the boxes are where we fall. And a lot of our ratios are in that uh, double A and even triple A category. So our um, available fund balance, as well as our liquidity ratios, are in the triple A category. So again, we've done a good job, at least with going back to twenty-one, of having strong reserves uh, as a city. Um, and then again, our leverage uh, as well, because again, we've been paying down our debt, and we don't have a lot of debt. Uh, I would say compared to other uh, cities across the across the country. And then even there's some in the double category. Where we start to fall into the the A category and even the um, the B double A, uh, B single A category, actually, um, is resident income is one. So um, our income levels are below the national levels, uh, as well as our full value per capita. So again, looking at the total assessed value of the city versus uh, the number of residents here is on the lower end from a rating perspective. The next slide, wanted to give you a little bit of a sense of how you you compare it to other localities. And and we picked just some surrounding here. Um, Hopewell's score is in the far left. Um, and we we show both sort of a pinkish-red, a brown and a green. And those correspond to the to the far right as to whether you're in the triple A, the double A, or the single A category. And you can see where Chesterfield, City of Richmond, Colonial Heights, and Petersburg are. I wanted to just note down at the bottom, the last two lines are your unadjusted rating, and the last line is your current senior-most rating. So you'll see that Hopewell has an unadjusted rating of that AA two or double A two. And then we have, we don't have anything down there for the for the uh, the current rating, obviously, because then that's where all the notching comes into effect. So if you look at Chesterfield, for example, they score it on the scorecard as a double A one credit. And Moody's notches them up to triple A. So they on a scorecard perspective are just a a double A one, but for other factors, uh, Moody's puts them up to a a triple A. Richmond similarly also gets one notch up from double A two to double A one. Uh, Colonial Heights scores as a double A one credit, but they're notched down um, to double A two. And the same thing for Petersburg. Petersburg scored a double A two and actually notched down two notches to uh, A one. Um, again, that's a little bit where that black box is, um, a little bit of the gray area with the rating agencies look at. And that's going to be, I think, one of the things when we are back in a position to go and talk to the rating agencies, we're going to get a a raw score that we can calculate and confirm. In my mind, it's going to be a question of how much the rating agencies are um, are going to notch us off of that, uh, given given our performance with respect to our our audits. And then just how much time it's going to take for them to get comfortable that we've got the processes that you put in place to remedy those uh, those delinquencies and then showing that we're 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 delivering our audits on time. So, Mr. Mayor, um, again, we're twenty-two, looks very similar, I'm sorry, twenty-one looks very similar to to twenty. Um, and when our our uh, next ACFRs roll out, we can keep plugging them in. Uh, but right now, we're we're very similar to where we were in FY twenty, uh, in FY twenty-one.
But we showed improvement, though.
We did show improvement.
Okay.
That's correct. But I'm happy to answer any any questions, obviously.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions uh, from the council? Okay, seeing no lights. Thank you, Mr. Sanderson.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Good to see you.
All right, moving on to the May financials. Uh, Ms. Jordan?
Good evening again, council. Finance Committee, May financials. So citywide, revenues for May are trending point four two percent or one point two million higher for twenty-five versus twenty-four. Expenses are trending seven point six percent higher or nine hundred thousand more for twenty-five versus twenty-four. Majority expenses increases stemming from the two point five percent annual increase that was provided to employees back in twenty-five. We also had some um, outstanding invoices for HRW. Any questions for citywide? Sure. Yes, mhm. All of the notes for everything is on the side here for any additional information. There were some outstanding invoices that had not been paid that we tried to get caught up for this fiscal year.
Mr. Holloway, can you speak up? We cannot hear you.
I apologize, ma'am.
Thank you.
I apologize. My paperwork is covered. But uh, wha- what was it specifically for the Hope Water Renewal?
It was unpaid utility bills, and we also went ahead and moved forward with the new compressor for HRW, at a half a million dollars.
You said a new compressor?
Yes.
Okay. Now. Okay, the expenses. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So um, our projected for the end of the year, citywide, is five point nine million revenues over expenses. General fund budget for May, general fund for May is trending nine point four seven or one point seven lower in revenues for twenty-five versus twenty-four. The decrease stems from ARPA funding not received in twenty-five, and the P and I date changed to March seventeenth. Currently, right now, we have about sixteen and a half million dollars in our bank account. We're projecting, as we go through the presentation, you'll see a projection of about twenty-one million dollars at the end of the fiscal year. Um, we just received over five million dollars in revenues for M and T, and our next due date is June fifteenth for the other half of the set, uh, real estate, which is about ten million dollars. Okay? Expenses for twenty-five are trending two point one percent or four million higher than twenty-four. A decrease in two point five decrease is due to two point five incre- um, salary increases given in twenty-four and capital transfers. We are projecting for the end of twenty-five. This is two point one, but that does not include the reimbursement for the compressor and some other um, items that have been paid out of capital that will be reimbursed. So we're looking at probably about three point two at the end of fiscal year twenty-five. Revenues over expenses, expenditures. Okay? Any questions on general fund? All right, enterprise fund, enterprise fund for May is trending point zero six or two point three million higher in revenues from twenty-five to twenty-four. This is really due to on-time billing. Expenses for twenty-five are trending nine point eight or nine hundred and eighty-four thousand less in expenses from twenty-four. Revenue show of reflection of on-time billing versus last year, and of course, the expenses decreased from emergency repairs required. So far, we have a um, revenues over expenditures with a net loss for nine hundred and thirty-two thousand for um, enterprise fund. However, this does not include any kind of accruals or additional billing for capital projects that have been paid so far. Okay, schools. Any questions for enterprise? Okay, schools. Schools for May is trending eleven point four eight or one point eight million lower in revenues for twenty-five versus twenty-four, and expenses are trending eleven point six or two point four million lower in twenty-five versus twenty-four. The projections for the end of this, the fiscal year for schools is five point eight revenues over expenditures.
Ms. Jordan, we have a question from uh, Counselor Stokes.
Sure.
On the expenditures for school, um, can you elaborate just a little bit more on the estimated eighteen million for schools, unrecorded OPEC?
This is unrecorded um, expenses as far as operations. So the school sends us on a month-to-month basis their payroll and expenditures. We are currently working through um, setting them up in Munis, um, as we are in the same system. So we'll be able to integrate between the two instead of waiting for them to send us the information. So it's kind of, um, we project out based off of year-over-year what their expenses or something will be, so we can add it to the projections. So until we get the complete information, this is just an um, an assumption that it's going to be eighteen million dollars in expenses.
So within what we've already budgeted?
Yes, it was already budgeted. It would be nothing additional. We're just waiting for the information so we can add it to the info- the spreadsheet that we have. That's all, and put it in the system.
Okay, thank you.
But we try to account for everything that we know is coming forth and just put it in towards our projections, so we're not missing anything or leaving anything out. Or we're looking for something unexpected. We try to make sure that we adjust everything that we know is coming forward.
Uh, Counselor Holloway?
Uh, you answered. I was about to kind of touch on, touch on answering it. Because Dr. Hackney came in and it's basically like the expenses for them have dropped down and also their revenue also because of what they are not receiving from the state now because of COVID funding and so forth.
Yes.
So that was a big change.
And then they have quite a few vacancies as well.
Right.
Next slide, data integrators collection for May. Overall collections was eighty-three percent. Accounts payable and debt services for May. For May, we paid one thousand two hundred and eighty-one invoices for a total of five million dollars. We also took care of our sewer debt, USB one eighteen twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand. The next slide is our projected cash flow. Again, currently, we have about sixteen and a half million in the bank. We're waiting on the second half of real estate, which is due June fifteenth, which would be roughly about ten million dollars additional revenue coming into the city. So we're estimating that at the end of the fiscal year, we will have a uh, bank balance of twenty-one point six million. Update on the outstanding ACFRs for the City of Hopewell. So far, the city has completed twenty and twenty-one. We are in the process of completing twenty-two. That is due to be completed June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Twenty-three will be completed in September of, on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, and we're looking to complete twenty-four by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And then we're going right into fiscal year twenty-five, which is due December fifteenth. We're going to try to get that one completed by March thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So the city will be back on track as far as the ACFRs are concerned. So we should be on time for twenty-six, yes, for twenty-six. Um, we are currently on track for twenty-two. There is nothing outstanding. We did, we were waiting for some information from outside contractors. However, we received an email today that they will be provided by the end of this week. So we are currently on track to complete twenty-two by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Counselor Holloway?
Twenty twenty was completed, I believe, in January of twenty, let me see, I got here, twenty-four, so twenty twenty-five, I believe. We just did twenty-one three months ago. So we're giving it, we're giving ourselves three months to complete every single.
Yeah, I'm I'm aware of these things, I just want the citizens to know this. Because I I spoke towards this the last time. These things were completed uh, months ago, but I, what I don't understand is why specifically it wasn't said on it. Now, I can, I can go to the assumption of why I spoke about this last time, but even here on this printed document, the second one said, hey, the city is on track, but the city was on track months ago in regards to these things. Uh, Mr. Bob had even came in and said to us, hey, while we're not celebrating, why does the citizens not know these things? Why are we telling them these things? It's pushed down as if it's just happening after we got rid of the city manager, but that's just not the case. And again, I want to make this clear for the citizens. Uh, these things I don't like because they are manipulative. Uh, these, these completions were done early on. The mayor would have you think that the only reason it is getting done now is because we have new people at the Alm. They were already done. And as you can see yourself, the date isn't even up there for that purpose so that the citizens could then assume that the only reason things are getting done is because of who's at the Alm now. And I, I needed to speak on on those, on those things because I just don't.
Councilman Holloway, can I just say, I didn't leave the omit the dates purposely. I can add them back. I just did not put them on it because they're already completed. Okay, I just didn't want to.
Yeah, no, I don't, let me make that clear. I'm sorry. I definitely don't want to put that on my, I I think that the finance directors is also in their job uh, and so forth, but I just want the citizens to be aware of these things, that they have been done for quite a while with no announcement. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Day?
Stacy, so the audits, when they were going to be ready and prepared and when they were ready, these were posted on the city's website.
Yes, ma'am. Mhm. They were posted on the city's website. Yes, and we also had Mr. Foley come and present before council every time they were completed. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to number three, uh, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to make this information presentation. Um, this is, um, as an information presentation, I'm not looking for any kind of action or approval or anything. This is really something I would like to receive some feedback from um, you because this is the first time that I'm presenting this in this format. We've talked about this conceptually in various planning meetings, uh, when we We've talked about this conceptually in various planning meetings when we were doing the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And, and also my presentations about economic development in the city and some of our key target areas. So specifically tonight, what I want to show you is something that I've been working on for the, for the past year. And that is some improvements to the Hopewell City Marina, specifically the store. And, and what we can do to increase economic development and amenities for the people who come and visit the Marina. If they're just there for the day or for the weekend, or if they have a vessel there in a long term lease. So just a little bit of an overview, this is the current Hopewell City Marina store shown in this picture here. It was built in two thousand and fourteen as part of a project that the city did essentially to invest money in, in the Marina. There was, there, before this was built, there was a cinder block building there that had some restrooms only. And so this was a, a nice building that was built and it essentially is, it rests on these piles or wooden posts that are driven in the ground. And that's why you, you see it's elevated in that way to be above the floodplain. But when we looked at our Economic Development Strategic Plan that council and Economic Development Authority developed together this past fall and it was adopted earlier this year. We looked at two areas that this Hopewell City Marina store project falls into. And one of the areas there is, is river fronts and our waterfronts. And then the second area is our history and tourism. And so what I try to do is, no matter what project we're working on in the city, I try to tie it back to that plan. Because that plan is really our guiding principle so we're not just going here and there and we're doing things in a very methodical and strategic manner. So the goal here was, is to redevelop for mixed use lifestyle and enjoyment, our waterfronts. And then from a history and tourism standpoint, to develop additional spaces for lodging, dining, and other things that support tourism. Just as a reminder, if someone comes to visit the city of Hopewell, the only way that we really have a benefit from them coming, other than just having their presence here, which is great and we welcome everyone, is we really want them to, to transact business in some way. We want to give them a place to spend money. So we want them to have a great time when they're here and we want them to be able to buy something. If they buy something, then, then there's additional revenue that comes in to the city that can be used to support debt and bonds and things like that and, and ultimately grow. So when we looked at this space, we said, what are the, what are the project goals we want to kind of set out here with this concept? To renovate the Marina store building into possibly a waterside restaurant with indoor and outdoor seating areas. Have, have a kitchen and restrooms that would meet code and then have some exterior area that was covered above the floodplain. So that we can really use the facility year round, or at least in the shoulder seasons. And then to incorporate space and programming for live events and entertainment. And, you know, over the years since twenty fourteen, there's been some great concerts, series that have been done there at the Marina. And what we want to do is rather than having a place that we set up and take down for each event, have something that's, that's more designed for, for long term viability without a lot of setup and takedown. This document here shows you the existing floor plan of the way the Marina store sits today. And it's got two restrooms and a shower that are outside for the use of the slip holders who rent spaces there at the Marina. And we also open them up for special events. And then inside, there's a retail area, a little checkout counter and office, and then a back of house. It's kind of a janitorial area back there with the hot water heater and mop sink and whatnot. And so when we kind of looked at the site, there's some utilities on the site. Specifically, there's this sanitary waistline that runs along the canal behind the building. And it, we can't build over that because it needs to be able to be maintained by the, the folks from Water Renewal who, who collect the sewer that comes down to that pump station. And this also, from this manhole, it goes out to the pump out station we have at the end of the dock so the boats can come pull up and, and empty their, their waste. And so this was a little bit of a challenge because at first we wanted it to come right off the, the side of the existing building with a, with a deck. That you could walk out and, and kind of watch the boats coming in over the water and see the birds and, and everything. Maybe while you're enjoying a cold beverage and a, and a steak or a sandwich or a sub or something. But when I met with the architects on site to get their ideas, they, they came up with this concept of essentially offsetting the, the deck addition and tying it into the exterior deck and walkway in front of the existing Marine store. And so that's why you see the existing building here in red and then you see the blue, which is the new deck addition that, that is being proposed. And I think it gives it a little bit of eclectic look and, and actually some character as opposed to being just like a big straight house, the way that they, the architects came up with this design. So, so this is the existing exterior view if you're standing there in front of the middle dock looking back at the, at the store. And it's just a little over a thousand square feet, it's pretty, pretty small as it is. And this is the, this is the render of what they, they came up with that it could look like with that, that deck addition. And we originally were going to do like just a canvas roof awning. But given the wind that comes off the water there, the structural engineer said he was concerned about uplift of that. And it, and, and basically the city spending money many times on fabric and canvas and stuff. And so the, the little bit of increased cost to do the metal roof, it's a basically a fifty plus year roof and so we won't have to worry about it. So this would, this would be similar to one of the pavilions that, that we have at one of the parks with that type of, of construction, if you can imagine with that, that metal roof. And as you can see in this, in this rendering, you see how it ties the, the walkway that's in front of the Marina store. It ties it in front of that deck so that you can actually walk from the handicap parking spaces all the way across. And it's very important, we want it to be fully accessible. One of the things about the Marina is we want to make sure that everybody in the city of Hopewell is a city space. We want to make sure everybody in the city of Hopewell can come there and enjoy something even if they don't have a boat. And so this will be a great way to, to add to that, that use for the, for the building. This is another view.
We have, uh, Councilor Stokes that has a question.
Oh, sure.
Just didn't want you to get beyond the design. You know how we like to eat, right? So we can eat in that pavilion.
The idea is, yeah, you'll be able to sit in the pavilion and eat and it will be screened in, in the, in the spring, summer and fall. And then in the winter, there'll be like a plastic vinyl that would come down to, you know, to knock, knock down some of the wind. The hope is that it can be used year round and not just in the, in the summer.
So you can catch from there too?
I don't think you, you wouldn't fish from there, you could walk across the fishing area and fish and then, what's, what's that?
I hope not, not while we're eating.
So, so yeah, but that's, that's the, that's the idea. Any, any other questions for us going?
So is this project, does it have a completion date?
No, I'm, I'm sharing, I'm sharing for the first time, you're seeing for the first time the concept that we've come up with. And we're hoping to get some, some feedback and then we would continue to, to go down the road towards it. Ultimately, and maybe I should start off with this, ultimately, it's not the intent for the city of Hopewell to operate this. The city of Hopewell owns this facility. Any improvements that are made, the city has to make and we own those improvements. We would be leasing this to a restaurant operator who would then be responsible to, you know, do the menus and, you know, all, hire the staff and all of that. This is, this is very similar, I'll show you some other examples of other locations that have done this. So, so this is another view of the, of the exterior from the entrance. And this gives you a, a little different perspective so you can see, we've moved the stairs around to the front. So you can walk straight up into the, the main store area or you can go to the, to the right. Let's say you were having a class reunion, so, you know, the Hopewell, my, my class, Hopewell High School class of ninety three, when we get back together in thirty thirty three, you know, we could use this, this pavilion, you know, area here and we could all celebrate there. And so then you could just go to the special event to your right. Also, if we're having a concert series, it's a little bit difficult to tell from this picture, but the, the area that's in the addition that's as close to the parking lot, that's separated from where you would, would sit. And so a band could set up there, essentially be under roof and cover, be elevated so the people in the parking lot could, could essentially see, see them. This is a, a planned view that shows the new building and some striping and improvements we would do in front of it and add some, some bollards. So that the folks who are coming in with the, the trailers and boats wouldn't get too close to it. And also shows that sanitary sewer line, did you see there? I have visited a couple other locations to see, you know, when you balance this goal of increasing economic activity, how can we generate more exciting, experience based things that people can do when they come to Hopewell? And generate more tax revenue and people. The Lily Pad in Henrico, Virginia, this is a picture, aerial picture of their location. It's, it's, the, the satellite imagery is a little old, they've made some additional improvements. But they essentially have done where these octagon shaped, white octagons are in front of the brick building. That, that's their version of the outdoor seating that they have, they have decks and then patio areas. And then the blue area, just a little bit difficult to see, that's where their, their stage is set up there. And they do quite a bit of business. I've, I've met with them and talked about kind of how they operate. That's a privately owned facility, it's not a, it's not a city or county owned facility. This next location, if you haven't been here, I would encourage you to go down. This is in Surrey, Virginia, it's, it's called the Surrey Seafood Company. And this, this was, this was developed by the Surrey County with a mixture of county funds and then also some grant funding that they received. And, and they, they did all of the docks there. And there was a very, very old Marina here sometime back, they, they got all the investment done in the docks. And then also the building where the Surrey Seafood Company is, there's a couple of rooms upstairs. I took my wife there for our anniversary a couple of years ago, right at the end of COVID. They have like four rooms up there, it was really nice. And they have, it was really a great bang bang shrimp. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little hungry, but, but the shrimp are amazing. And, and the, so the Pack Brothers, they, they acquired the, the county did all the improvements and the Pack Brothers who also own the Smithfield Station, they, they're the operators here, here now at this. So that, that's two examples of, of locations that have done this. So, you know, this is the first presentation, the first time that you guys are seeing it. And I know you have a lot of questions, happy to answer those and look forward to, to, you know, coming back and talking more about it in the future.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Bennett?
Good job.
Vice Mayor Joyner and then Councilor Holloway?
So I did get some, I did get some rough order of magnitude pricing on this and the, the rough order of magnitude came in between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand. And that, just, just to be clear, that included, that includes adding two bathrooms inside, building the kitchen, everything basically to have it, no, no appliances. If you think about it like this, what the city would do is the improvements, if you took the Marina building, you turn it upside down and you shook it, whatever falls out is personal property. So anything that stays in, that would be our improvements. And so that's where that budget is, between two fifty and three hundred.
Uh, Councilor Holloway and then Councilor Ellis?
I, I was about to speak to the same thing of the cost, but this, this wonderful director, economic director that we have. Can you share with the citizens so we can kind of have an overall understanding of the turnaround that has happened since the city has taken over the Marina? The funds that come in overall and how you have, the city has already been successful with boat rentals, different things like that. So they can understand the monies that we now have coming in at the Marina.
So, yeah, I can speak to this. So I'm very fortunate that we have been able to invest, collect and invest over a hundred thousand dollars this past year in fees. So in other words, boaters who pay ramp fees and boaters who pay for long term rentals or transit rentals, because we changed some of the slips so you can just come for the day. So I was looking at today, year to date, we've spent a hundred thousand dollars and we've collected just a little bit more than that. Thankfully, we had kind of under budgeted what the ramp fees were going to be. I had, I had assumed we were only going to be around ten thousand dollars in ramp fees and we've, we've almost got forty thousand in ramp fees and we're not even done with the year.
And that's, that's what I was about to say, can you do also like a comparison of where we, how much money we did not have compared to us taking on the expenses now?
Well, it was, well, it was a totally, well, it was, it was a totally different setup before. So before, before the whole Marina was leased to a private company, they collected all the fees and just paid a, paid a, a fee to the city to, to lease it.
Correct.
But the difference was, the difference was they had staff, they had people that they were paying to be there.
Right, right.
They had the store that was operating and all that. So pretty much, I'm, I'm going to the Marina in the morning, I'm picking up trash and I'm closing up at night. So I'm, as Economic Development Director, I'm running the Marina and my salary is not being covered by the Marina. If it was, then we wouldn't be able to spend a hundred thousand dollars on all the wood. So it's, it's, it's an apples and oranges comparison. The idea in the future of this restaurant and just meals and food tax alone with, we have seventy three, basically seventy three seats at two, two table turns at, you know, a, a business day. And this is really going to be popular on, on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, for the, for the most part. But, you know, we're estimating this will do between thirty and fifty thousand a year in meals and food tax alone. Which, you know, you take that, you, you, if you invest two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred, whatever works out to be, and those are twenty to thirty year improvements and you, you make fifty thousand a year, or even, to conservatives, say thirty thousand a year in meals and food tax, you get that back pretty fast. So that's a, that's a, you know, just a little bit of an overall of the numbers. But I'm, I'm glad to report, we have, we have replaced in board feet, we've, we've replaced over seven hundred feet of, of board there, including the boardwalk in the front and then going down the M dock, rebuilding multiple piers. And actually, the city manager has a, has a requisition in his box right now to approve for the, for the boat ramps. We've, that are going down to replace the wood on the boat ramps, we're going to raise up, up a little bit because the water keeps flooding over it at high, high tide. So, yeah, but it's coming in and we're spending it and don't, don't get upset at me Stacy, I'm not spending more than I bring in.
Absolutely, yeah, I just wanted to, just touch on the fact that let the citizens know, I wasn't kind of comparing the biz, like the, the private business to our business. I was talking about as far as, we still had to cover those expenses anyway, but now we also have income, increased income coming in to take care of those expenses.
Well, pretty much just all the money that comes in the Marina goes to the Marina and, and we'll keep doing that until we get all the wood replaced and we get it, you know, in a good condition.
Thanks so very much.
Uh, Councilor Ellis and then myself?
Yeah. I really liked the design.
Awesome.
Just so happens I was the previous people that you were talking about that are random Marina, so I can elaborate a little bit more on it if, if y'all would like to. But this is something that we, we talked about, you know, but it just didn't come to fruition on, but I'm very passionate about the Marina. Cause that's why we were there, you know, when we were there, the city didn't have to pay the lights, the trash, we had employees. It was pretty much, we paid for everything, everything was in our name and we paid the city to do it. So it's not a, it's not a real profitable business as you and I sat down and looked at and you were trying to figure out why I even wanted to stay. But I like the design. We worked hard while we were there. I just, I wanted to see it succeed. I mean, the people like the Marina, we're a big hunting, fishing, outdoorsy community. And I, I, I really want to see something, you know, prosper there. And I think with what you're doing here, you've done a very good job so far. Took people a little bit of time to get used to the kiosk. I still hear a little bit about that, but. I still hear a little bit about that, but you know, you'll get through that part. How, the dredging part, is that, I think you said no permit needed because it was dug out?
So, yeah, we're getting a little bit off the topic, but I will say that the canal behind the marine store, we've determined was a hundred percent man-made in nineteen forty-nine, based on the photos we have, aerial photos, which means when I can get it in the budget, so that the dredge, the canal is going to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Which is very important for the restaurant to, for boats to be able to do that.
It is. And what, you know, so the provision we have now is we have six visitor slips in the middle dock. And those visitor slips have no gate or anything. They can pull up, they can call the telephone them or they can reserve them on DAWA. So that's where people are are coming now, walking across the parking lot, yeah. So it's really about, for for me, it's about, before we spend money on on putting in the budget to dredge the canal, I've got to be generating more, more revenue and then fixing all the safety things. So I don't know if anybody's been by the marina in the last, since last Friday, they started, they started taking the front of L Dock apart and they're working their way across. The engineers finally finished everything and so that's that's in good, you know, in good order. The schedule I got says it'll be done August twenty-seventh, so looking forward to having that.
Well, it looks good.
Thank you.
All right. So I again want to reiterate, you know, what Mr. Ellis said. Yeah, I think the design is great. I love the idea of going through and, you know, doing the dredging piece. And I think that'll especially help with our sports tourism as we have, you know, Paddle Battle that has hundreds of people coming out each year. The one thing that I just want to make sure that we're doing is when we're, you know, designing and we're laying this out, that we're preparing for the future. Because I think that this is going to be very much a big success. And I just want to make sure that we have the ability to, you know, if, you know, later on down the road, that we can, you know, build up, you know, vertically. And that we also have the ability to, you know, you know, build out, you know, more horizontally if, you know, it becomes a bigger and bigger success. So that way we can, you know, generate more revenue down there and that we we take care of the utilities and that the site is, you know, good for a potential future expansion.
That's good. I'm glad you brought up that point. So one of the things I'm working very closely with with the Department of Development is on this site, there's some places that we really have to limit how much we build and there's other places that we can build a lot more. And it has to do with the elevation and has to do with how close it is to the water. So this right here is probably the most, at this location on the site, we'll be able to do. But we are looking kind of in the master plan about other locations to increase the revenue. And we we want to make sure, one of the goals I didn't mention at the beginning, this this is used by so many citizens. The amount of people that come and put their boats in there, Hopewell residents and and all the surrounding areas, we want to make sure that we don't take away from the ability for people to to still access those ramps and do that. So that's very important. And we want to make sure as we're as we're master planning. I agree with you. There, this this site in, you know, the next five to ten years, you're not going to be able to recognize the amount of things you'll be able to do and the amount of additional people that will be coming to do those things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There's, there's, there's a lot of opportunities. The city has almost six acres of waterfront property here. There's a lot of opportunity for us on, what's tricky about this part, this part is in the floodplain. We we have to be, we have to be very careful. And so this whole deck is going to be six feet off the ground and poles. There's very little that we can do in the floodplain, but the areas that are outside of the floodplain, we have a lot, a lot more flexibility. Sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for that. We're moving it now on to our city manager report. Mr. Rogers.
Mayor Council, since I've been here, I note that there have been several murders that have been handled by the police department. I also noted that previously in the agenda of the police department report was buried up front and was not spoken to. I've asked the chief tonight to come and make his his report to the citizens about the status of police activity in the city. And you noted last week that the department is now certified, recertified, which is a good thing. Good work of the chief and his colleagues in the department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. I'm here to present the crime summary report for June of twenty twenty-five. Next slide. Murder, forceful rape, robbery, aggravated assaults. As you can see, violent crime total in twenty twenty-four was thirty-two and is currently forty-one. So we was up nine in violent crimes, which is a twenty-eight percent increase. And I just want to stop right there and talk about the violent crime in HRHA property. As you are aware, that on May the third of this year, we had a homicide. And on June the fourth, we also had a homicide. The first was in Thomas Roff Court and the other, the last one on June the fourth was in Piper Square. We have made arrests. And also I want counsel to know that neither victims resided on HRHA property. And for as we know, there is no relationship to any of the tenants that reside in HRHA property. What we have been doing and will continue to do is working with HRHA management. And we are working with the leadership. We are communicating because one of the issues that we we seen was communications. And since the last recent months, we have been effectively in communication and meeting with HRHA management, working on with the directors and working consistently to communicate. We also have Project Safe, Safe, Alive and Free. They are a group violence intervention that you all knew about. And they will be doing a walk in Piper Square on June the twelfth at two P M to address the last shooting incident that we had in Piper Square. Information sharing. We're sharing information, the leases, the problem tenants, the trespassing list, the housing list, the the ones that have been barred from HRHA property. We are working to, with leadership, to address those issues and communicate to make sure that we are efficiently and effectively working with HRHA management team. And lastly, one of the main issues was the cameras in HRHA property. And one of the things that we have improved on is all the cameras are operational except Piper Square. And the reason why Piper Square is not fully operational is when they did the renovations, it was electrical issues where the wires were cut. Venture, the electrical had been working progressively. The cameras are back up. Not all of them are working, but they're, we're getting there. So I just wanted to make sure that you all know what are we doing to address issues in HRHA property. And one of the things that I I wanted to make sure that counsel is aware of, because we have been reporting and we've been sharing these reports with HRHA. And in the month of April, group A offenses, which is assaults, intimidation, assault, simple drug violations and weapon law offenses, KIPAC's high-rise, a total of two calls. This is in the month of April. Piper Square, a total of three. Thomas Roff Court, a total of eight. For the, so for the month of April was a total, calls for service was eleven. For the month of May, like I said, we had the homicide on May the third and June the fourth, but the month of May, all major group, all major and group A crime incidents were violent crime, property crime, group A offenses. Davisville, one incident was reported in the month of May. Hopewell Heights, one incident reported. Piper Square, one incident reported. Thomas Roff Court, four incidents reported. So a total of seven incidents reported for the month of May. So what we're working on and and working with the tenants and meeting with the tenants is, is these just actual calls or you're not calling? And if you're not calling, we want to know why you're not calling. And we want to ensure that if they have a problem in HRHA property, they can, they can call the police, that the police will be responding, not to the residents. If they do not want to see a police officer, because they want, we don't want them to feel intimidated. And we want to respond and be efficient in addressing their concerns in HRHA property.
Chief, we have a question from Counsel Stokes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I attended and I am the liaison between Counselor and Hope, Hopewell redevelopment and housing authority. Impressively, there is a police officer now assigned to their meetings that comes into the meeting and give them the same update that you just gave me we got last night. I was very concerned about the number of cameras that were down and how long they were down at Piper Square. But I got permission from the chairman and I may need to probably just meet with the city manager and you. You were talking about why they're not calling. You cannot hear me? Why they're not calling. And the reason they're not calling is because they need to feel more protective and more safe in giving information because on, maybe unlike most of us, they live amongst some of the people that are committing the crimes. So to give you the report, they need to be protected. And at the resident council meeting, the residents are concerned that they're, they sure they want to cooperate and be a part of neighborhood watch, but they need protection. And that was a big concern for the residents and the HRHA board last night. And they gave me permission to address you on it and to protect them through the Commonwealth Attorney or however you have to do it so that they can come forward and help you.
Yes, ma'am.
But that that was major for them and I thought I would present that to you this afternoon.
Yes, ma'am. And once again, that was one of the concerns because I went to one of the, the tenant community meetings at Piper Square and that was brought up at the meeting. And since that time, that I've been working with the supervisor of communications to ensure that all of our dispatches are aware of any incidents in HRHA property or protocol for when citizens call and they do not want the police to come to their residence, that they feel free to contact the police. So we're working on that.
And they're getting called in as witnesses and they don't want that part either because they live amongst some of the, you know, alleged sus- suspects?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And we'll do, we'll work with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and make sure those concerns are are communicated with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and they can take appropriate action to, you know, try to prevent that from occurring.
And I think once you get that done, you'll probably get flooded with information because they're loaded with it. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Counsel De.
As a council, in conversations that we have with each other, you know, we all earnestly want to see something change with Piper Square. You know, especially here lately, there has been a lot of crime that's, you know, maybe not being reported. But I talked to several citizens there and to piggyback off what Counsel Stokes is saying, that fear of retaliation is very real for them. I've even had them, I've had citizens say to me, I'm even afraid that if I call and they ask for my name or want any of my information, that that could be foible and somebody's going to find out that I'm the one that said something. So, I mean, they're genuinely afraid to say what's going on. I mean, they they want it to stop, but they live there, so.
And one of the other things that we're, we are doing as well is our patrol division. They're doing outdoor road calls. They've been directing patrols in Piper Square where they actually deal with foot patrols in the businesses and residential areas, including HRHA property, where they're getting out of patrol cars, they're walking and they're talking to citizens. Because we want to communicate with them and build that trust so they'll be confident in in calling us so that we can address their issues and concerns.
Thank you.
Counsel Holloway.
Kind of touching, I was, I was there recently with I stepped out for a moment, Beacon Hill Church, the pastor was out there feeding the community. And I will ditto what Counselor De said that was spoken by some of the people out there. But the 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 interesting thing is, the crime that's going on every time I hear, may not every time, but the few times that I've hear reports are actually coming from people who do not reside, is is my understanding what you're saying, that actually aren't residences there. And the suspects either. So it it seems to be that this is a, these are circumstances that are non-residential.
Well, the, that that is a problem area. That's a management that we're working with management said that the people that live there, they have to be accountable to the people that come visit there. And you know that HRHA property is open to the public. And, you know, we have people that come from Hopewell, I mean, Prince George, Surry, Sussex, Desbitahna, Richmond, to come to HRHA property for various reasons. And and the reason why they come to HRHA property to commit various issues and and crimes, we really don't have a a a reason why, but it does occur that outside citizens do come into HRHA property to cause problems.
So, so, so to kind of dive a little bit deeper, I I think that Hopewell redevelopment housing authority already has in place that the tenants are responsible for their guests. But like, for instance, a few years ago, it was another young man that was shot there that they totally said, I think, at the time he came down from Pittsburgh and he, it was like a drive-by, about to say a drive-through, a drive-by. So when it comes to these types of things, how are you going to hold the tenant responsible? Is there, is this?
That is information sharing between the police department and Piper Square, the the tenants that are, have at least with HRHA, their rules and regulations. And we got to ensure that management is communicated and advised about these incidents so they can appro, take appropriate action based on lease violations. So it's a matter of us making sure that management is aware of these violations and they will have the responsibility, if it's not a criminal matter and it's a lease violation matter, to take it and and take the appropriate action.
I apologize. I guess my question was a little mixed. I'm talking about in the cases, this is easily, easy to identify if it was a situation where somebody was a guest of someone's home. I'm talking about, is this a case that they're reporting that the incidents that are happening, the person, the suspect that is coming in shooting, like the last instant, incident, for example, was the suspect a guest of a resident there or was this?
Suspect was not a guest of the resident.
Right, so, so what I'm asking then is, why would the tenant be responsible for?
They would not be.
Oh, okay. I thought you said, okay. That's what I was saying in that case. Because you was saying, holding the tenant responsible. I'm like, I thought it was a non-resident. Okay, thank you so very much.
Okay, back to my crime report. Arson, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle thefts. Total of property crimes in twenty twenty-four was a hundred and seventy-eight and it's one hundred and thirty-nine now, so it's minus thirty-nine. So property crimes, we are down minus twenty-two percent. Total major crimes we had in two twenty twenty-four was two hundred and ten. Currently is a hundred and eighty. We're down minus thirty, so minus fourteen percent. So total at this point in major crimes, we are down minus fourteen percent. Next slide. Opiates. For twenty twenty-five, over the past five years, this has been the lowest that we've had in five years in opiates. Twenty twenty-five, we had two. Non-fatal, we had twelve and grand total of fourteen. Why the, the numbers are going down? Education, enforcement on the local, state and federal. Education, enforcement on the local, state, and federal, and on knock-in. And I think those are the driving forces that, that is helping reduce the opiate issues in the city of Hope Well. Next slide, please. Uh, verified shots fired, these, uh, verified shots fired, uh, considered actual verified shots fired, where we go to the scene and find actual evidence, found casings, property damage, et cetera. Uh, twenty twenty-four, we had twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five, we've had twenty-six. Uh, we're still, uh, fortunately, uh, some of them, but not all of them, we were able to make arrests on them. And, uh, we, we continually to look at, you know, we, we went and earmark, we have some earmarks to, uh, to improve our technology in regards to, uh, dealing with, uh, these types of incidents. Uh, Neighborhood Watch meetings, you can go to next slide. Higher name recruitment, next slide, please. Currently, we have, uh, eleven sworn vacancies, uh, and one, the emergency communication vacancy, the, the emergency communication vacancy, uh, I will have a final interview with that candidate this week. So, if all goes well, we'll have a full staff and dispatch. Uh, there are eight, uh, applicants in the background phase. Uh, our last physical agility test was on May the twenty-eighth, and, uh, as already stated, July the seventh is our next police academy. And currently, right now, we have three scheduled to go to the police academy, and we already have one certified officer that has already begun employment here. All right, next slide. Next slide. Uh, community engagement, our downtown efforts, we continue with our foot patrols downtown. Also, not only, uh, like I told you, I talked about Patrol Division, that they're doing community cage engagement throughout the city, in the businesses, and also downtown. Uh, we continue to do our business checks downtown. And our business, and, uh, citizens, uh, downtown, they are, uh, the business owner contacts. Uh, the Beacon Theater overtime, that we still have an officer assigned to work the Beacon Theater when they have special events. I'm working to get, uh, with the board and to work to, uh, to communicate, to work to see how we can provide and continue with the security at the Beacon Theater. The Beacon Theater is a major attraction in the city of Hope Well. And we want the citizens that attend the Beacon Theater to feel safe when they come downtown to attend these events and leave these events. Uh, uh, downtown focuses, as you know, we, uh, reduce the speed limit on Randolph Road and Appomattox Street. We have been, uh, enforcing the speed limit on Randolph Road and on Appomattox Street with assistance of the Sheriff's Department. Uh, can't think of enough for their enforcement efforts on Randolph Road. If, if you ever come through there during the day, you may see some lights blink. And we continue to enforce, uh, traffic downtown. And also, we're doing downtown bike patrols. We have officers assigned downtown to, uh, continue to do bike patrols throughout the month of June and, and July. We have two speed trailers that's operational right now. Uh, these, these speed trailers are, uh, the goal is to share information about, uh, speeding, holiday safety events, uh, special events, notify the citizens and motors and, and citizens come through Hope Well, what's going on in the city of Hope Well. And we also have, we purchased a speed monitoring device. This is a speed monitoring device that we can set up and check the speeds by time of day, day of the week. So we can take this information, download it and look at it, so we can, uh, provide appropriate resources in, uh, residential areas of the city to reduce, uh, speeding compliance. Uh, next slide, our community engagement activities. Uh, May the thirtieth, the, uh, gaming trailer was provided at Patrick Copin School for who, for the students who improve their S O L scores. Uh, the community engagement officer and staff are working with the state police to, uh, set up a, it's, it's a HEAT. It's called HEAT, help eliminate auto thefts to, uh, assist with crime prevention and, and in the reduction of motor vehicle thefts. And I can say for twenty twenty-five compared to twenty twenty-four, we have had a reduction in motor vehicle thefts because in twenty twenty-four, we had the high-end days, uh, and fortunately, through proactive policing and, and, uh, getting the information and working with the high-end day, there, there has been a reduction in, in auto thefts in the city of Hope Well. Uh, the community engagement, just had a meeting with the Commissioner of H R A J yesterday. And we will continue to, uh, attend their monthly meetings to share information to, uh, make sure that we provide, uh, management with all the information that they need to, uh, work with the tenants and work with us to reduce crime in H R A J property. Uh, the, on June the thirtieth, the community engagement officer will be working with Recreation and Parks. It's called a, a play all-day event that'll be scheduled for, uh, June the twentieth. And lastly, once again, H R A J and our officers, uh, we're going to have a, it's called SEPTAT, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Designs, that we go into Thomas Roth Court, and then next go, we're going to Piper Square, that we can look at ways that, uh, the environment, the treating, the lighting, whatever we can do to help reduce crime in H R A J property. We're, we're working to do the best we can.
I'm questioning.
Yes, ma'am.
In your community engagement activities, any opportunity to, to take care of our other residents of the city, our four-legged animals? Um, I'm an animal lover, I know our city attorney is an animal lover, and we doing community engagements, and you have the, what are you calling people? The shelter. I'd like to see more stuff on our animals. I don't know how many other animal lovers we have around here, but animal lovers, raise your hand. Yeah, so we would like to see, you know, more engagement with our four-legged friends.
Well, our animal control staff is fully staffed, and I, I can tell you right now, they work very hard to address the animal control issues and, and at the shelter. And, and unfortunately, the shelter is staying full.
Really?
And we are doing our best to work with the, you know, the adoption agencies that we have contracts to make sure these animals are, are adopted, and as well, as when we do have our, uh, community engagements and our upcoming barbecues, there's some of that, uh, animal control is with us to share information about animal control and, and, and share, you know, just basic information that they need to know about animal laws in the city of Hope Well. So, yes, we will be working and, and we do care about our animals as well, our four-legged friends.
Got them, our four-legged residents.
Well, this concludes my crime information report, and I'll be there to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, not necessarily a question, um, uh, but more of a request. Uh, I know that Counselor Stokes and Vice Mayor Joyner both asked for, um, a, you know, a joint meeting with, you know, city council and H R A J. Um, and I know that you're in the process, Mr. Rogers, of meeting with the H R A J CEO.
Yes.
Uh, over there. Uh, I think it'd be good for us to go ahead and let's, you know, get something on the books, you know, here in the next, you know, month. Um, so that way, we can, you know, start talking about, you know, these issues and, you know, let's see what their action plan is to address these issues that are, you know, I'm glad that they're finally recognizing a lot of these issues because in previous council meetings, you know, they would, you know, take the ostrich, you know, burying the head in the sand, your type of approach. So this is, you know, good to see that, you know, they're, they're being more engaged, um, and that, you know, we're also, you know, we're sending police officers, um, you know, to the meetings to provide them with information. Um, so I would really, you know, like to see, you know, this, uh, this joint meeting happen here, you know, in the next month.
Very good. All right, looking forward to it, and I'll be there to attend as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, Chief, for that, and, and let me say that, uh, I will ask the chief to come monthly. I think it's important that we place an emphasis on public safety for our citizens, and that they know what the department is doing to keep Hope Will, Hope Well safe. So I thank, thank you for that, uh, that presentation, Chief. Now, I, I have put before you a, uh, a brief memorandum on the Hope Well Water Renewal, um, authority. And I want to say that, uh, when I was appointed, uh, almost a month ago, I met with each one of you, uh, tried to ascertain, uh, what your priorities would be for the interim city manager. Uh, coming away from that, it was very clear that with a pending, um, uh, action by Virginia, uh, environmental quality, that we needed to place, uh, emphasis on, uh, Hope Well Water Renewal. Uh, I have walked the plant, I've seen the conditions with Michael Crocker. He has pro- provided executive leadership, uh, there, uh, for some months, uh, with the support of a, a, uh, of a contractor, uh, in the manager role. Uh, my conclusion is that Mike has, already has a full-time job. And so what we are doing is not sustainable. And yet, I, uh, am not certain that we are ready for a recruitment of a leader yet. There have been several reports, uh, on, uh, Hope Well Water Renewal. One by Dewberry, our consultants, and one by Hazen and Sawyer on, uh, on staffing. Uh, the report by Dewberry outlines in great detail, you know, the, the, the challenges at the department in every section. Uh, they recommend, uh, a series of studies which add up to several billion, million dollars if, to, to get, uh, further, uh, information on, on where we are. It's not an action plan yet, but it will provide a path forward. Um, I think that, um, uh, we, we are doing what we can with the resources we have to address some of the issues, but it's incremental, uh, right now. Uh, I think that, um, uh, the Hazen Sawyer, uh, report also provides additional data in terms of the challenges at, at, at the plant. And it recommends additional twelve people, which is a couple of million dollars that we have to, ha- have to think about. There are, um, other options, I think, that we need to study. And over the next, uh, couple of months, we will be deep looking at alternatives for improving, uh, that operation. In the meantime, we're doing things, and the report outlined, uh, some of the actions that we have, have, have taken. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you pointed out to me that three million dollars had been appropriated by this council, you know, some time ago for the Queen, uh, Queen Anne Pump, Pumping Station, and it had been spent. We looked into that, you're right, uh, but now purchase orders have been issued against that three million dollars, and we're getting that moving, that, that's a start. Uh, but we have a long way to go, uh, for this, uh, operation to be sustainable. So we'll be coming back to you, uh, regularly, uh, updating you on what we're doing and what needs to be done, uh, at the plant to make it sustainable long-term.
Okay. Um, and I know that you just gave us, uh, you gave us memorandum, but are you guys putting together an action plan, you know, specifically for the pump stations? Um, like, you know, when you plan on, you know, coming to us for appropriations on each of those?
Mike Crocker?
Um, so that is our intention, is to put together an action plan for the pump stations. We'd have to look at this collectively, even though we're a hundred percent responsible for what happens outside of the gate of that plant. It's the city's responsibility, and it's, it's a lot to tackle. Uh, the first hurdle is Queen Anne. We do have other pump stations that require significant expense now. Um, and we're actively working on those plants to keep them running. Um, there are major safety upgrades that do need to take place. Um, and time is of the essence with a lot of that stuff, but we will have an action plan put together. I don't have a date yet, but we, that's, that's the next step.
Okay.
Why, you have, Mike, talk about City Point?
Sure, uh, City Point Road, paving, um, a lot of interest surrounding City Point and it being shut down. Um, it, it, from the surface or from the, from the barricades, one might think that, oh, it's a paving operation that took too long. Um, the geography and geology of Hope Well is, um, interesting. I'll just put it at that, at that. Um, underneath of City Point Road is an old concrete road, uh, that was in, in disrepair. Um, it does not serve as a suitable surface for asphalt, and unfortunately, during paving operations, a dump truck sunk in City Point Road um, due to the nature of the soil conditions under City Point. So, um, it's taking a little bit longer than we would like. Uh, we appreciate the public's patience. Detours are painful. Um, that particular stretch of road will likely end up in a restricted scenario where truck traffic will be limited to fire trucks and trash trucks at the heaviest. Um, tractor trailers navigating that area, they're creating significant damage to the roadway. Um, so that paving project will incur, incur some additional costs in order to reopen the road. But, um, right now, we're setting it up to be back open on Friday, so fingers crossed, and the rain holds awful. Hopefully, we can get it back open. I, I do, do want to stress, it's not the long-term fix for that road. Uh, the long-term fix for, and, and that soil condition exists sadly in a fair area from, from Sixth Avenue, we saw it in Winston Churchill. I think I dug thirty-two feet in the ground, and it existed all the way down. Um, I never found suitable soil. Uh, this particular small section of City Point, just in order of magnitude, um, we had to overexcavate over three feet and fill back up with three feet of stone in order to have a, a base that would support asphalt being put back on top of it. So, um, right now, we're in a remediation scenario to try and get the road back open. Um, so we do appreciate everybody's patience, but that's, that's where we're at as of now.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move now into communications from citizens. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement?
A communication from citizens, period limited, and total time to thirty minutes is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing the council shall, shall approach the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hope Well, their ward number, and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any item scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay, all right. Uh, before we call on folks, um, I know that a lot of folks are here probably tonight to talk about an item that's on the agenda. So do I have a motion from city council to waive the rules to allow, uh, citizens to comment on items that are on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
So the motion is to waive the rule so that way, uh, citizens can speak about items that are on the agenda.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, uh, first person that I have signed up for tonight is Laura Greenwood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, how are y'all?
Doing fine.
Nice to see you, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Laura Greenwood, and I've been a Hope Well resident for over a decade now. Um, I'm in Ward Six, Miss Sticks, and, um, recently purchased the home that I've been renting for over the decade, just this past December. So I am a property owner of Hope Well now.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. So I'd gone to the, um, budget meeting that was over at the, uh, Community Center, and I listened to everybody talk about their departments and so forth. And I didn't find anything in regards to, um, a spreadsheet. in regards to a spreadsheet. No data, information whatsoever. It was just all kind of polished stones. So when I heard that the budget is going to exceed $7 million as a homeowner, this is very concerning to me because I don't know what your budget is to begin with. I don't know what last year's budget was and how much, why $7 million is going to go up. So I've talked to some of my local people. My neighbor is a resident of Hopewell for over 80 years, and she doesn't have a cell phone. She doesn't have a computer. She relies on the local news. She doesn't, you know, she doesn't get any of the information from this council. So I was talking to her, and she was like, "I didn't know that." I said, "No, you don't." So talking to some other folks, I've realized that there is no oversight committee here. Why don't y'all have a city oversight committee? So I've talked to some other folks. Now, I'm a retired commercial art director, public production manager, as well as a marketing analyst. I've worked DOC at a level state prisons. Got insurance under my belt. I'm pretty knowledgeable in a lot of different fields. So I also know how to go about getting news releases out. So anyhow, I'm concerned about there's no oversight from what I hear about nobody is being held accountable for these funds. Where's the receipts? Is that Ms. Jordan? That's not your responsibility, right?
Um, yes, it's not my responsibility, but I'm trying to understand what you...
I'm talking about all these budgets, you know? The budget's going to the police department, which I'm all for, and the fire department I'm all for, but budgets, these other budgets that are going out. I don't see any spreadsheet. Where's the spreadsheet?
Speaking to the panelists. Yeah, I will let you finish your comments, and then we're going to allow...
I know I got three minutes, and then you can respond to me, okay? So what I'm recommending my other homeowners is to start up a homeowners volunteer oversight committee.
Okay. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Three minutes is up already?
Yes, ma'am.
Damn.
Give me an extra 15 seconds.
I got a whole list here. I put it in bullet points for you, but I would like to get it to you, so I'll give you my phone number.
Yes, ma'am.
And you call me, and I'll get you this information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Jordan, yeah, can you please comment to that, because I think there might have been some misinterpretation of information.
I believe it was, um, so when we say...
Can you come up to the microphone?
Come up to the microphone.
Sorry. So when we say that we have a surplus of like 5.2 million revenues over expenditures, it's to the good, it's not to a loss. So we're not, we don't have a loss of $7 million. If we're projecting for citywide, it was 5.8, I believe it was, to the good. So we have more revenues than we have expenses, which means we're monitoring our expenses, we're controlling what we purchase down to necessities and not just wants. And we're bringing in more revenue so that we can build our fund balance, as you heard Jimmy from Davenport, to make sure that when we are complete with our ACFRs, that we are able to receive a good...
You're basically in the red.
No, we're not.
I mean, in the black.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my taxes isn't going to go up?
No, no, ma'am, not right now. Now, per the state code, per the state codes, there's a reassessment required every other year. So the reassessment was just done this fiscal year, so in 2027, the city will have to go through another reassessment, but that's per the Virginia State Code. Okay? Yes, that's per the Virginia State.
Yeah, because that's what makes it very...
Yeah.
I'm on the type, but it took me a long time to be able to buy this house.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next name, I am having a hard time reading. I think it might be Marion Lane? Someone with the last name Lane? Ward one? No? Next is Amanda Barnett.
Hello, council members. I am Amanda Barnett, and I reside in Ward Four. I am here to express my concern regarding the proposed ordinance to remove the ability for responsible citizens to carry firearms in city-owned structures, parks, et cetera. As someone who would be directly impacted by this, I'd like to provide some insight. While I may not be a city employee, I have worked at the city-owned library for six years. In these six years, I have witnessed various acts of misconduct and/or violence in front of the entrance, in the cafe, across the street. We are very familiar with the Hopewell Police Department and their officers, and we are eternally grateful for their presence and aid. The sad reality is that we, as a city and community, have a large group of unhoused people, people who face severe difficulties accessing basic, necessary resources and services. Some suffer from untreated mental health or medical conditions. A lack of access to these resources only compounds the issue, leaving people with little to no help to manage these symptoms or access mental health care, which leaves them irate and unpredictable. While the aim of removing firearms may prevent violence, it is a truly heartbreaking situation, but also an unsafe situation with the homeless. It overlooks the reality some mentally unstable individuals may pose a threat to the community, especially in the absence of mental health care. Additionally, Hopewell's crime rate is at an all-time high. The police department's doing their best, but they can't keep up with every single criminal in the city of Hopewell. With that being said, as a single mother of a two-year-old, I frequent plenty of the parks that Hopewell has to offer, and I've had several instances where I was so uncomfortable that I left. I grabbed my son and I left, out of fear, because people with bad intentions prey on the vulnerable: women, children, elderly. I can't even begin to describe how terrifying it is to feel helpless in a situation, especially when you have a two-year-old baby to protect and think about. If you are a parent, you understand exactly what I mean. Instead of removing the right to carry firearms, we should focus on addressing the root causes of our societal problems, namely mental health care, housing solutions, and community support systems. A comprehensive approach that includes providing mental health services, social reintegration programs, and adequate housing could create a safer environment for all members of our community rather than stripping citizens of their rights with this ordinance. Advocate and address the underlying issues, both crime and homelessness. While I understand that the intention behind the proposal may be to enhance safety, I believe this is a dangerous policy. This ordinance will inadvertently put vulnerable individuals and law-abiding citizens at a greater risk. You are removing a critical layer of protection, leaving women, children, elderly, et cetera, susceptible to violent crimes like assault, robbery, or worse. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next person is Brandon Howard.
Brandon Howard, Ward Five. I've lived in the city since 2011. I'm also the president of Right to Bear Arms Virginia. To talk about y'all's upcoming proposal to ban firearms here on city properties. As president of Right to Bear Arms Virginia, I teach free concealed carry courses at the Hopewell Library. Free courses that normally cost a citizen $75 to $200 to take. You pass this, that goes away. My organization also does events in our public parks where we do firearm education and responsible gun ownership. You pass this, that goes away. You are stripping the citizens of their rights unconstitutionally. Recently last year, under the Supreme Court's Bruin decision, says historically, where firearms have been carried, firearms are allowed. Looking at the sign right behind you says 1916. Since 1916, historically, firearms are allowed in this building. Firearms are allowed in our public parks. So historically, under the Supreme Court Bruin decision, your law, your ordinance is unconstitutional on its face. There are currently two lawsuits on this exact same ordinance in Virginia taking place, one in Roanoke and one in Fairfax. Why don't you put this on the table, let those lawsuits play out, let the courts decide on the constitutionality of what you're proposing right now? Because if you pass this before those suits settle, you're going to have a third lawsuit by me and my organization filing suit against the city of Hopewell, where each of the councillors who vote for this are going to be known throughout, because I'm going to make it very public, because you're going to cost the citizens of this city hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees for the city and to pay my legal fees, because I'm going to win this suit because of the unconstitutionality of the ordinance that you are now proposing. So save the city and our citizens the money that they're going to incur due to legal fees and damages to an unconstitutional ordinance you are getting ready to pass. Because the last thing this city needs is to be sued again and lose, as they have done and had happened time and again. The city has a poor track record of winning lawsuits when citizens sue this city, and this will be another example. So if you vote for this, you're going to be directly responsible for the loss of the citizens' money. I'll make sure every councillor who votes for this is known throughout the city of why our finances have been stripped due to their negligence instead of letting these lawsuits in Fairfax and Roanoke settle that set the law that's already being taken place. Thank you.
Next person is Karen Thayer.
Can I let Mr. Burrows go in front of me, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Burrows, Ward Three. Tonight, I'd like to share some of my thoughts and beliefs with you, and I hope that you will recall them when considering your stance on future votes for our city. I'm not a scholar nor an intelligent man, but I am a warrior, a combat veteran, and a patriot. I believe in freedom and justice, even if the price of it makes me uncomfortable or fearful. My son is a veteran. I lost my father to Desert Storm. My stepfather was a POW in Vietnam. My father-in-law was also a Vietnam Vet. Both my grandfathers fought in World War II in Korea, and one of them continued his service throughout Vietnam. I have traced my genealogy and have discovered that my bloodline has fought in every war since the War for Our Independence, and they all fought with one thing in mind: our freedoms and our way of life. In my house, freedom isn't a word that's only used on July 4th. It is an inherent right bestowed to us by God and our forefathers. It is ingrained in every fiber of our bodies and oozes with our speech. Freedom is what allows us to pray while still being what we pray for. Our country is based on two documents: the Declaration of Independence and our Constitution, both of which guarantee us our freedoms and our rights. Every time some law, bill, or ordinance is passed that reduce our freedoms, it is akin to pulling another string from the very fabric of this nation. How many strings have been pulled and how many more will be pulled before eventually this fabric disintegrates, falling apart into tattered pieces of its former glory? It's not our government, our economy, our Wi-Fi networks, or our hot water that makes us the best nation. We are the greatest nation on this earth solely because of our freedoms and our inalienable rights that allow us to live as we see fit. Freedoms that were earned the hard way at a great cost. My bloodline didn't fight for a more intrusive or restrictive government and more laws. They fought and sometimes died with the belief that they were protecting our way of life and our freedoms. I implore you to please think about what our freedoms and our rights mean to you and where you would be without them. Please always vote in favor of our rights and our freedoms. Please don't force us to become a city that slowly erodes the bedrock of this great nation that I love so dearly. That being said, Mr. City Attorney, you should be ashamed that everybody else in this room stood up and said the pledge allegiance, and you sat there with your mouth closed. It's disgusting, and you ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Council members. I'm here today because I oppose this ordinance that you all are wanting to pass. Ms. Joyner and I, we recently had a conversation over the telephone, and I expressed to her my feelings about it and my concerns. I am a single woman. I am by myself. Anywhere I go, I'm by myself unless I have a friend with me. And when I do have my friend with me, he's carrying, and I like that because I like knowing that I'm being protected. Now, I don't carry my gun with me everywhere I go just because of the size of it. I did have a bigger gun, but I gave that to my late husband's brother recently, just because I wanted it to stay in the family. But I don't want you, Ms. Joyner, to be concerned of what you're concerned about, and I won't discuss that. But I don't want you to be concerned about that. What I do want you to think about is something that my mother expressed to me as a child. The ones that you need to be concerned about are the ones that are silent, not the ones that are vocal. The ones that are silent are the ones that you have to worry about. The ones that are vocal, they rarely ever do anything. It's just something to think about. Now, I will second the young lady, and I think that this was her first time coming here and speaking tonight. I will second on her thoughts and concerns. I will second on Mr. Burrows' thoughts and concerns. We have fought in these wars, and that Constitution says a lot. So please, take that ordinance that you're considering passing and just toss it to the side right now. Like Brandon said, and I'm sorry, Brandon, that I don't know your last name. Like he had mentioned, we don't need another lawsuit that the citizens will have to pay for. And I really think that that needs to be taken into consideration, okay? And if you are concerned, Ms. Joyner, I'm sorry, go and take Brandon's class. It's free, okay? Thank you.
Hello. Do I speak just like this? Is this good? Nice to see everybody. It's wonderful to be able to have a public forum of interaction. I'm a resident Chesterfield and Richmond. I wanted to support the wonderful speakers who came up before me, so phenomenal in their word and honesty, integrity, and share of many veteran families. I just want to wholeheartedly say I'm humbled by what they offered up to you guys, and I could not even hope to better what they said. I think selective bans can be incredibly dangerous to people, not just unconstitutional, but logically very dangerous, whether it's rest stops or parks or areas that are supposed to be permitted, but you're not quite sure, of delineation. Whether you're a single person, whether you're a girl, a woman, to have selective bans can really put people at tremendous disadvantage. And a little quote off my phone was kind of neat where it said, "Disarmed people become subjects." Disarmed people can become victims to whatever is greater in power than they are. Thank you.
Next is Wayne Parsons.
My name's Wayne Parsons. I'm from Ward One. And I have just two questions I want to ask city council. And you can acknowledge your answer by nodding your head or yes or whatever. I just hope that y'all, somebody in this room, will start doing something, will start asking questions, and will take action. My first question is, if a city employee has been discovered to falsify or alter time records and other employees engaged in conduct to hide this from the director of a department and the city manager, is that grounds for termination under city employment rules? Any of y'all? I see most people don't even respond. Okay. Now, second question is...
I don't think we can answer back, unfortunately.
Oh, did none of... Oh, okay.
We're just not, we're not legally able to answer. But you can send in questions, and we can...
Well, I've brought issues to people, but nobody's seen... Well, I've, I've brought issues to people, but nobody seems to want to talk. All right, it's the second question. If there is a presumption that a member of City Council moved to terminate a city employee based on racial ethnicity, is that grounds to have that City Council person removed from office? Hmm? I think y'all need to start listening. I've been trying to talk to serve with y'all, nobody wants to listen. It's time that y'all start acting on what's going on behind your back. And if it's not going on behind your back and it's going in front of you, then you're all a part of it. If somebody would like to talk to that guy, I've got his phone number. Anybody want to talk to him? Am I allowed to approach?
Yeah, just, yeah, just give it to the clerk. Give it, give it to the clerk.
Y'all have a good evening.
Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Parsons.
Mr. Parsons.
Um, what I'm, what I'd like to ask you is that if you have knowledge, or an employee has knowledge of something that's going on, you know, please reach out to the City Manager's office and, and make an appointment.
I have a lot of knowledge.
Okay. And, um, Madam Clerk, will you make copies of those? And then, um-
He gave seven of them.
Oh, you got seven copies? Oh, okay, great. Um, and just make sure that, um, the City Manager gets one of them.
He literally named it dead guy.
That's an anonymous guy.
All right, next is Danny Cook.
I've lived in the city of Hopewell for over forty years. I'm not sure exactly which precinct I, I'm in. I think it was, um, Mr. Parton's old precinct. But anyway, I'd, um, like to just tell you a story. It's relative to the ordinances that are being considered about the firearms. So in 2008, I'm out on a nice little walk. This car shadowing me, shadows me all the way to my home. I get out of the car, guy gets out of the car, points a gun at me, asks me for money, don't have any money, and he shoots me and leaves me laying on the ground. So the police arrived timely. Of course, they couldn't be there in time to present, prevent the problem from happening in the first place. I go to the hospital, I'm in the hospital for fourteen days. I come out of the hospital, I can't walk because my left leg doesn't work. I lost my right kidney, and I'm trying to, um, recover. My family went through all these, uh, issues with it as well. So I start to recoup, I start to get back on my feet. I'm walking with a walker initially, then to crutches, into a cane. Mental state is not good, I don't like being cooped up in the house, so I need to walk for both getting myself back on my feet, as well as, um, being able to get my mental state going. The mistake I made that night was I didn't have a gun with me, because I could have stopped it on my walks. Then I started carrying my pistol. During the timeframe that I was recovering, I was outside my home. And when this happened, the city, the police were concerned that this was a gang activity, um, maybe an initiation. And so they were concerned that maybe they would come back and try and finish what they had started. So I was carrying my pistol everywhere. And so I'm out in my front yard, trying to recuperate, I'm working on my whole boat. I have this gentleman come up, um, drive down the driveway, he stops, don't recognize him, gets out of his truck, has a stern look, doesn't say anything. I turn so he can see the pistol. He keeps coming. I put my hand on the pistol. He stops dead in his tracks. He says, you know, "I'm just, um, trying to know where the builder's supply is at." That's back when that was still in business here in Hopewell. I give him the direction, he goes on his way. I'm sure he was up to no good. Second instance, later, few days, maybe a week or so later, I'm out for one of my walks, have my pistol. Car pulls up opposite to where I'm coming, stops, two people in the car. One person opens the door, gets something out of the trunk, sits back down, leaves the door open.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Cook, uh, you put your times up.
Understand. Anyway, twice, that gun saved me, and I recommend that you drop this ordinance.
Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Martin Mitchell.
All of us down is in, are freezing up here. I don't know what's going on, but can we have a temperature check? It's freezing.
And I had it muted until I got up and stuck it in my pockets. My name's Martin Mitchell, Ward Three. A few years ago, and I don't remember the exact date, myself and several others presented counsel with a petition with roughly a thousand signatures on it. We packed these council chambers all the way out into the parking lot to make Hopewell a two-way sanctuary city. Ultimately, that night, council voted six to one to make Hopewell a two-way constitutional city, to acknowledge the Constitution and our right to bear arms. The ordinance that you are considering does nothing but take away the rights of law-abiding citizens. It's not going to stop the criminal from doing anything. Criminal doesn't care about your ordinance, doesn't care about your signs, all they care about is doing what they want. So please take these things into consideration when you're asking us to give up our rights, because the criminal doesn't care about their rights or our rights. I hope that you will put this ordinance off to the side and forget about it, and it doesn't come up anymore. Thank you for my time.
Okay, uh, next is Pamela Paul.
My name is Pamela Paul. I'm in Ward Six. Ms. Stokes is my councilperson.
Hello.
Um, I, uh, with, along with everyone else, and totally against this ordinance that you are bringing upon us, um, we should have the right to protect ourselves. Um, you know, I have grandchildren that I take to these parks, and I don't know if any of y'all have been to the parks lately, but every now and again you get some sketchy characters there. You know, I should not be run out of those parks. I should not be made to take my grandkids home and lock them up so that the criminals can take over it. With all the bad, um, items that are coming about with this council, I just want to say one thing. You know, I've got the feel, the, I've got a feeling that, you know, negative attention is still attention, and I believe that there's quite a few of you on this council that are attention hogs. So please, do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Uh, next person is Liz Steele.
And I am from Ward Three. The, the gun deal. I am not anti-gun. I feel that in government complexes, yes, there should be a ban in the government complexes for the simple fact that, well, no, that would be saying it wrong. Every one of you need to be protected. The young lady behind that screen that takes my tax payment needs to feel safe in her job. The average person, city worker, that is out on the street, needs to feel safe. They also need to be allowed to carry a gun with proper training offered. I feel those things. I also feel that when I am in the park, that man right there is next to me and got a gun, I feel good. Because what is going to happen is the average family that's sitting at their table says, "Oh, they've banned the guns in the parks," and this, that, and the other. Those are going to become open game for everything that's going on with twelve, thirteen, fifteen-year-olds that are up and coming, you know, want to be in the mix. So it, it's kind of a one-sided, like I said, I'm not anti-gun, but I am pro for legal hackers that have that certificate and that training, that the odds are, if they're somewhere, you know, that I'm out in public, that is not in a government complex, they're going to have sense enough to react, because they will know, you know, how to do in that situation. And like I said, your employees, some of your employees that are out at night doing things that are not allowed to have a gun, give them the option. Keep them safe, just like everyone in the complexes need to be safe. Thank you.
Uh, David Paul.
My name is David Paul. I'm Pam's son, Ward Six. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I have a few questions just to leave y'all with. What are y'all gonna do to try and make Hopewell safer for us to where we don't have to carry? Another thing is, what are some of the steps to, to, uh, I'm sorry, why do you feel like taking everybody's right to carry away is appropriate? What's going to stop those who choose to ignore this ordinance? They're going to do what they want to anyways. Then you have people to visit. My girlfriend comes and visits me. She's five foot three, she's real itty-bitty. I worry about her. It's not exactly the safest place. But how is this supposed to benefit us when you're taking the ability to carry from us? I'm not sure how many of you are veterans or current military. I know John Parton is. I know he's a, uh, captain in the National Guard. But when you enlisted, you took an oath and swore to uphold the Constitution. And right now, it seems like you're doing the exact opposite by trying to enact this ordinance. So I'm just asking that y'all please dismiss it and seek other routes. Thank you.
Uh, that's all that I have signed up for tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that did not sign it that would like to speak?
There was a second page.
I'm sorry?
There was a second page.
It was on the back, but I don't have a second page up here.
I know two of us had a separate page. That's all I can say. All right, let's see, I have, uh, Leila Myers, that you, okay.
Philip Van Cleve, okay. Rob Cutler.
That's a totally different-
We have, Mayor, we would have to, uh-
And then I have Anthony Sylvester.
We would have to put a motion in to, uh-
I know, guys, hold on one second. I'm just trying to find out if they're doing communications from citizens of the public hearing. All right, so, all right, so all three of these were, Mr. Sylvester, are you here?
Anthony Sylvester left.
He left? Okay. All right, so at this time, is there a motion to extend the communications from citizens, period?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counsel Holloway and seconded by, by, uh, excuse me, uh, Counsel Day to allow these folks to, uh, speak, um, since we're over our thirty-minute time limit. Okay, seeing no lights? So call, please.
Counsel Ellis.
Yeah.
Counsel Day.
Yes.
Counsel Stokes.
Yes.
Counsel Holloway.
Yes, and I, I hope this is given to all.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, we'll start with, uh, Leila Myers.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Leila Myers. I am a resident of Prince George County. Um, we love to come to Hopewell. We support all tri-cities, Petersburg, Colonial Heights, Hopewell, through your restaurants, your businesses, your local businesses. We visit your parks. If I had to choose, if you pass this, I'll be going to Colonial Heights and Petersburg, besides Prince George. So you were talking about what you're looking for in your visitors. Those of us who are law-abiding gun owners do not bring crime. We bring the money that you're looking for as revenue, for your sales tax, meal tax, business tax. So your businesses will notice, because we will spread the word that Hopewell is not open for business for law-abiding gun owners. So you will notice that through loss of your business revenue. I am a legally naturalized citizen. I swore allegiance to this country. I've traveled the world. I go back to my birth country. I call this place home. What you're trying to do here is inconceivable to me to be done anywhere in America, inconceivable to me to be done in Virginia. Just to think, to do something like that in Virginia after what happened here a few years ago, where we passed Second Amendment, um, sanctuaries, thank you, all across Virginia. I have a map at my home that shows all the localities have adopted it. Very few haven't. So it's inconceivable for me that you even put this on the agenda to even consider. So if you pass this, think what's going to happen. Those who have to attend this meeting and cross the parking lot at this hour will have to be unarmed, ready to be victims. And even though there's a police officer's department right across the parking lot, the Supreme Court says they have no obligation to provide me safety. That is not their duty. That is not their job. They do not provide safety and security to me as an individual. The Constitution provides me ability to provide safety for myself and any other person who happens to be in a situation of danger to their life. I had to use that right a few years ago, enrichment, bright daylight, nine o'clock in the morning, sunshine shining. I saved a life. No firearms were, no, no shots were fired, but the presence of my firearm saved life. Very imminent danger to a very little human being, nine o'clock in the morning, no doubt what was happening. Thank you.
Uh, Philip Van Cleve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. And I also want to thank you for accommodating us, for the, giving a little extra time for us all to have a chance to speak. I really appreciate that. Uh, I'm Philip Van Cleve. I'm the president of the Virginia Citizens Defense League. You all may remember fifty thousand people showing up in Richmond in 2020 to protest some proposed gun control. That was my organization. I live in Chesterfield. The, uh, government is there to serve the, the people, and disarming somebody like myself who has committed zero crime, and, and the other people in this room, those that have permits and those that don't, uh, will not make them safer. I mean, if it did, then you disarm the police and make them safer. It doesn't make you safer to take away your ability- It doesn't make you safer to take away your ability to protect yourself. If you declaw a cat, it doesn't make it safer from being attacked by a dog. And so that, that's something you have to consider. Um, it's also like saying, okay, any sober driver, we don't want you to use your seatbelt to protect yourself. If you're not sober, we don't care what you do, you can have a seatbelt if you want, but sober drivers, no seatbelts. That's a similar analogy because a seatbelt is, is a method of protecting yourself from an accident. Guns are a way of protecting ourselves from the evil that's in the world. So, uh, I would strongly encourage you to, to, to just walk away from this. Currently, um, and by the way, we sued the city of Winchester over their gun banning parks and won. They had to get rid of that, we're currently, we sued them also over something you're not doing, which is permitted events, we won that one. And, uh, we, uh, we're suing them over gun banning their parking lots, basically pointing out that's not a sensitive government building. And I really don't want to have to go through that again, I'm hoping that you guys would just, you know, let citizens go ahead and protect themselves because our lives is the most precious thing we have. Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Uh, Rob Cutler?
The subject that I signed up for wasn't pertaining to this, but I don't have a problem speaking on it. I mean, I think a couple of them have, have said it best, criminals don't care about the laws you pass because they're gonna break them anyway. I have a wife that works nights, by the time I'm getting off my job, she's on her way to hers. I don't want her unarmed, I don't want her anywhere in the city unarmed. I mean, sure that she got her concealed carry permit, we've done everything that we were supposed to. You're talking about taking away our ability to protect ourselves? I don't think that's the best, that's the best route. I mean, you have to put yourselves in our position. We don't have security details, so how are we supposed to do it? This, I, I don't believe this is just something that's gonna work, I think this is something that actually just needs to be written off, let go, and move on to the next subject. That's all I have to say on that, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilors, Brenda Pellam, Ward six. Uh, I'm a person who's not opposed to the total ordinance as it is, uh, in the minority, of course, but that's okay. Uh, I'd like to give you a story about eight or ten years ago when a person was patrolling the voter registration office with two guns and a rifle, and I was bringing the first-time voter to the, to vote. And that, that situation intimidated that person so much, they wouldn't even get out the car. Uh, and so guns act in both ways. And I think the intent of our Constitution that we talk about, and I'm a veteran too, an intent was to bear arms to protect your family against then animals and bears and tigers, I guess, when they first passed the Constitution. That Constitution has been interpreted a lot of different ways lately. And I know we have a president that breaks the Constitution every day almost, and that's been like more what we need to be fighting about in unity instead of guns. Criminals do have guns, but I don't believe in guns in public places. Maybe parks, but not public buildings. And why do they have to be concealed? If you proud to take a gun, why you have to cover it up? So, I mean, we're proud, like most, some people do anyway. But I, I, I don't, my con, not maybe parks, because it's open space. A lot of people get hurt in parks, right in my ward, we've had a death on our park. And, uh, but in public buildings where people work, where children go to school, I, I just don't think they should be in buildings. And so if the bill can be considered to be rewritten in a way that that could accommodate some of, of people's concerns, but in public buildings, they should be banned. And, uh, that's just my opinion, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
I'm Ed Howser, Ward five. I'm an old guy and I like to tell stories, not lies, stories, so I'm gonna give you a little one. I was standing in Walmart one day, I had my firearm on my side, standing and lying waiting to be waited on. I had two or three young boys standing behind me, one of them looks at me and starts laughing and giggling. He goes, what do you think you wanna do with that? So the other two boys start laughing and giggling with him. I looked at him with a dead straight face and I said, I might be saving your butt. The laughing stopped immediately. These were teenage boys, you know something, they were smart enough to realize what I just said, hopefully y'all will be too.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak that didn't sign up?
Robert Sargent, Ward one. Like everybody's saying, criminals don't care what the ordinance says. Um, they're gonna do what they wanna do, and you're gonna take our given right to defend ourselves. Um, look at me, I'm in a wheelchair, I'm already at a disadvantage. Someone comes up to me, I need to be able to defend myself to the fullest extent. If that involves using a firearm, so be it. The police department, sheriff's department's already overwhelmed with all these random acts of violence that's going on in the city. And here you are wanting to take that away from us, our ability to protect ourselves. Think about it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Chad Myers, I'm a resident of Prince George, but I frequently come into the city of Hopewell to do any shopping, maybe go out for dinner. So there's a few of this firearms ordinance proposal, uh, says it'd be a class-one misdemeanor. That's nothing to scoff at, it's not a small fine, it could be thousands of dollars and some jail time. So I would have to take serious pause about risking running afoul of it. Uh, I've had a Virginia concealed carry permit for the past twenty years, never had a single violation. But yet, this ordinance would definitely give me cause not to come to the city. Possibly because of the way it's written. Says a park, some parks are easy identifiable. There's a little plaza out there with the statue of Dr. King, is that a park? So if I'm just going for a walk and I walk through that, would I be in violation? I don't know. It refers to transporting a firearm. Once the, uh, Marina facility gets built, wanna go out for dinner there. And if I leave the firearm in the car when I go inside, would I still be transporting a firearm on city property? Reading through this proposed ordinance, there are many places where it's left open to interpretation, to the point where I wouldn't want to risk getting a class-one misdemeanor. So I would probably just choose to avoid the city of Hopewell, take my business elsewhere. I hope this doesn't become the case, there's many places in Hopewell I like to come visit. I hope you'll take that into consideration, thank you, yield my time.
Mr. Mayor, can you, can the city council make comment on this so by the time we get to it, we can just decide whether or not we're voting, etc., now, can we go here and get that in?
Are you talking about, like, discussing this item now, or?
Yeah, yeah, just like the citizens, I probably have about three minutes if we, so if you do-
Yeah, I mean, is that a motion that you're making?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, that the city council, that they'll comment towards it now.
But you can just make a comment on the subject, is that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. That's, well, that's what I was gonna say, I mean- Alright.
Yeah.
So the motion is to amend the agenda to move up, uh, CCR one, uh, to before public hearings?
Yes. Alright, so I can go ahead and make my comment now?
Uh, one second. Uh, yeah. Mr. Harris, would you make the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Mr. Holloway. Seeing discussion, seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Alright, I can make my comment now?
Uh, I'll say, I think, since this is Counselor Joyner's item, um, we're gonna let her tee it off and then we'll turn it over to you for the comment.
Number one, I, I wanted to say that, um, the part portion of this particular ordinance was, was, it was never intended, Mr., our city attorney looked at, um, other cities and looked at their, some of the ordinances that they had passed and used the other cities as a template, is this correct, Mr., Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, that's correct, and if there's going to be, the, you can offer a substitute ordinance if that's your, if that's your choice.
Yes, um, he has prepared a substitute, uh, ordinance that does not include parks at all. Uh, it was never my intention when I, when I initiated this to include parks. I'm only interested in city buildings. And contrary to some of the comments that have been made, city of Richmond, city of Richmond does not allow any firearms in any city buildings at all. And that has been the case since twenty nineteen, okay? So that's a while, that's five years, there are plenty of other cities in the, in the Commonwealth that have no guns in, in, in the city buildings. I'm gonna just say that a few years ago, in Virginia Beach, uh, someone came in and killed a number of city employees, okay? At that particular time, the, our second floor was secured because some of our, you know, the, our city, our city directors and city councilors, we make decisions that people don't like sometimes, and people come, become very agitated and enraged. And so at that time, okay, at, at the time of the, of the Virginia Beach tragedy, they secured the second floor, but yet, the second floor, they secure it, and then the same count, same department has come over here to a city council meeting and might be sitting ducks. I, I'm trying to be proactive rather than reactive. Uh, that's where, uh, that's the reason that I, I, I submitted this, um, because I think it is appropriate. We also have a social services building that we have case managers that, you know, people become very angry with their case managers and come in and, and threaten violence. And so their social services director, I know, is very concerned about the safety of, of her employees. So that was, that was the, those were the premises, the reason why, and I have, all I am interested in are the city buildings, nothing other than that, no parks, no anything. Um, I have no interest in, in limiting, I am a, I am a Second Amendment rights, uh, advocate. I do, um, support the-
Guys, want to be respectful?
I, I am a, I didn't, I didn't laugh when you spoke. Um-
Somebody said, it's a comment.
I, um, I, um, I am a Second Amendment, uh, supporter. And, um, so, but I do feel that this is, this is public safety. This has to do with public safety, and that's where I'm at. And that's just my, that, those are my thoughts. And we are not the only city in the Commonwealth to, to, to enact this.
Hold on, sir, sir, sir. Sir, this is not a time for the public to comment. Excuse me, sir, sir, please, officers. Alright. Counselor Holloway? And then Counselor Day?
Luke twenty-two and thirty-six, Jesus tells his apostles to kick, his apostles to carry his sword for defense. Luke eleven and twenty-one says, when a strong man is fully armed, guards, his house and his possessions are safe. The scripture in there is probably about sixteen more that pop off the top of my mind that I have to be righteously, uh, against, um, not having the right to bear arms. And respectfully, I understand the spirit of fear, but I believe that fear has uh, come so much in our ranks. And I agree that we should be more proactive to the fact as the, one of the citizens that may comment to, to do the things that lessen the crimes in the first place. Again, even if this ordinance is passed, respectfully, a person who wants to kill somebody can still attempt to come through. If you pass this order, order, ordinance for, uh, city buildings, this is basically public, it's a city building, but this is supposed to be public, um, so that our citizens can come in. Then we would have to then put a metal detector outside, determine who else is not coming in here so that the sheriff's personnel or police departments, um, these things add to it. Again, I want to reiterate, all of us want to feel safe, but let me say this, we do all do some things that the citizens don't like, but if they wanna ad, be agitated and kill us, they'll do it in the parking lot or even at our houses. And so I have to stand in agreement with the citizens that have spoken tonight that it is not only unconstitutional, but it's definitely, uh, against scriptures for us to do these things. Our bodies are the temples, this is my house and my protection against, um, uh, to, in defense all throughout scripture is to defend this, meaning I carry my house with me. Um, I applied years ago for, and respectfully, uh, former Councilor Pellam had made the statement about people being, what was the word, uh, intimidated by carrying guns, but then there was a little bit opposition of why people should conceal their guns, with having, getting a concealed license will actually in fact lessen that intimidation, I believe. But the people who would strike to do any harm to us or anybody else are again people who are already not law-abiding citizens. So that, that's what I wanted to comment on tonight, so I think that this is very unnecessary. It does not put any safety in place, um, for somebody trying to harm somebody, it just puts another rule, it takes away another cho, uh, choice. When people talk about things for and against, the word of God says, a place before you life and death, he tells us to choose life, but he still gives us the opportunity for choice. And so that again, tonight is where I stand in regards to this matter, that I don't think that this will eliminate, um, somebody coming in here and, and shooting somebody if that's what they wanted. This ordinance only further provides more opportunity, um, to lessen the freedoms that we already have. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Day?
This ordinance wouldn't do anything different as far as the building goes than if you go to the courthouse. If you've decided to, um, get your concealed permit, you have to go to the courthouse, uh, to go pick that paperwork up. You can't have your gun in there with you. Um, and it has, I mean, when was the last time you've ever heard of any kind of incident like that in the courthouse? Because it does prevent that from happening. This is a government building, just like the courthouse is a government building, just trying to make all these spaces safe for the people that have to work here. There are people that do get very upset about taxes and things like that. You have people that, you know, with the assessments going up and them unable to pay for their mortgage and things like that, and they, you know, they come to the treasurer's office, they're very upset. Um, and so just like in the courthouse where you have judges making decisions or you have witnesses there against somebody, those type of situations can cause somebody to be very upset. But when you go to the courthouse, you don't take your gun in there, you walk from the parking lot to court, you walk from the courthouse to your car without your weapon. That's the exact same thing that we're presenting to do here. You would be doing the exact same thing you're doing there. Or if you go to the school, it's the exact same thing, you can't have it in the school. And having the metal detectors in the schools and not allowing people to come into the schools with those with, with the way our society is now was put into place to keep our children safe. So I agree that this is something that's just being done as a safety measure. I never agreed with the parks, when I first saw it come out on the ordinance, I started making phone calls to find out where that came from. And, you know, we realized that it was something that, you know, was inadvertently put on there, it was something that we, I don't, the councils that I talked to didn't agree with it from the beginning. Um, so that was something we had already intended to try to let that park go. But that's, that's why I feel like, you know, that, that, this is something that, you know, is for the safety of everyone that comes in here. Originally, I guess, what they would start with is signs, so if there's a building that, a government building that you can't have a, a gun in, there'll be a sign- there'll be a sign letting you know, you can't bring it in this building. So you would be aware of, you know, where you could and where you couldn't to start off with. But I, I just, it's just a safety measure is, is what we're looking at it for.
One thing that I think would be a good idea to have included in here as some language is, you know, folks like Mister Howard, you know, do provide, you know, a service, you know, to the city with, you know, gun safety, gun education. But, you know, I think that there should be some sort of a permit process that, you know, you submit a permit to, you know, hold a class. And if you hold a series of them, then you can file one year permit for, you know, multiple days that this class, you know, was, you know, being scheduled up for the year. For things like, you know, the library or if it's being done at the community center. I think that those are good things, but, you know, unfortunately, you know, there's a lot of buildings, you know, government buildings, federal buildings, state buildings. You know, you need metal detectors to get into. You can't have guns in the General Assembly Building. Can't have them in courthouse. Can't have them at the Patrick Henry Building, which is where the governor's administration is. Can't have them at Hopewell High School. You can't have them at Cardigy Woodson. I mean, you can't even have them to get on a plane. And I think that, you know, when we, if, you know, councils amendable to, you know, some of these changes and, you know, some of these tweaks, like, you know, removing from the parks and whatnot, I, I think it would end up helping prevent, you know, a, a mass shooter event. When you have people that can, like the Virginia Beach incident, you know, go in to City Hall or go over to the Beacon Theater, when there's a really popular sold-out show, you know, shoot people. Especially, you know, talking about, you know, protecting children at the community center, Social Services Building or the library. You know, I think, you know, with, you know, something that needs to be done is also look at, you know, installing metal detectors for those buildings. I mean, they've done it for, you know, the high school, they've done it for the middle school. It's done at the courthouse. I think, you know, some of these, you know, government buildings should be done. Also, I think, you know, Henrico passed, you know, a similar ordinance that, you know, prohibits, you know, firearms in government buildings back in, you know, twenty-twenty-four. And, you know, their, you know, board is, you know, a partisan board where they have both Democrats and Republicans on there, and it was a five-zero vote. You know, and that included, you know, libraries and rec centers because, you know, they understand the importance of it, especially in this day and time. So that's kinda where, you know, I'm standing with this. Counselor Ellis, and then Counselor Harris.
Harris hit his first.
Oh, you did, okay. Counselor Harris. Ellis, and then Holloway.
This is, this, this is kinda unusual for me because of this discussion right here. We were just presented with a substitute motion. And we didn't make the motion. And we had discussion. Usually when we make a, get into discussion, we usually make the motion first and then we discuss it. But we didn't make the motion. So we, we want to back this up and do this thing, back the rule?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. I mean, we need to make the motion and then we'll get into discussion. That's when I'll give my discussion part.
We, 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 uh, had, I had requested specifically. So it's already been a standard set.
So what we did was, we amended the agenda for, you know, for this item. And then, you know, we did start talking on it without a motion. So you are correct.
Right. We, we set the standard. That was the question that I requo- requested. So the standard has already been set tonight that we are making comment on it. That was actual, my actual request was that get permission for us to speak on the matter and discuss it and then go into voting. So we've already set the standard and more than four counselors would have had to agree because more than four counselors have already spoken to set that standard. So it'd be kinda a little discriminatory to cut the comments now. I believe that we should go forward with the comments and second round of comments and then go forward.
If we make the motion, we just won't cut the comments. If we make the motion, the comments will continue. I'm not gonna make a comment until we do make the motion.
Well, my...
Cut the comments.
Right. But, but since the standard is already set, I want to make other statements as well because, for example, one of the citizens brought up some good points. What parks wouldn't be considered, parks wouldn't be considered transfers. So I, I don't, I think we need to table it at least for one more night unless there is something that is agitating so much and everybody up here is fearing death or something that I didn't get a memo about, uh, uh, about something happening. We haven't had this place, this in place before. And respectfully, some of the things that was, that the mayor was comparing is just not, is apple and oranges respectfully. I, I'm not even sure that not being able to have those weapons in those cities' buildings, if it still includes this. Comparing a courthouse, comparing a school, comparing all of those things to something where our citizens can come in in public and sit down freely versus, they don't have the right. We don't come in and sit down in the governor's mansion in the courthouse unless we go in the court, unless we're doing that. This is a public hearing with pe- the citizens of Hopewell, law-abiding citizens coming in. Is there any sta- statistics? Because that's what y'all cry and ask for all the time, right? Is there any statistics that show that this is even necessary, preventive? I mean, goodness gracious, we gotta get a little bit deeper. If this was a necessary thing, but you don't have any statistics unless I didn't just grab them, that makes this something necessary? Or is this just a individual fear that has popped up? Let me tell you something. I haven't seen the presence of this many sheriffs last year when everybody was crowding this place against me and saying stuff. But all of a sudden, this year, when the Dr. Menker thing came up and people didn't like it, we all of a sudden got the whole sheriff department now coming in. So these fears are coming out of nowhere and they seem a little bit discriminatory. Last year, now, or year before last, I think, when, uh, Counselor...
Counselor Holloway, your three minutes is up.
Uh, uh, the whole time, we've been checking point. I went over three minutes, they went over three minutes. So we've already said that pres- yes, we did. I made her, uh, I...
I've been timing it myself.
Yeah, but we, I've looked at the time and had... Have we gone over three minutes? We've literally gone over three minutes tonight.
Well, you had your light on.
So...
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion that we can... We need, I'd like to make a motion to extend the time we have given that...
Counselor Joyner has the floor right now.
Making a motion. I put a motion, I'm like...
I'd like, I'd like to submit a substitute motion for the, the revised ordinance that does not include parks for consideration.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting.
Okay.
Mister Mayor?
Yeah.
If a substitute is gonna be introduced, it should either be introduced here or we should discuss what substitutes need to be made and then direct staff to make the change and be made at a later date.
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah. Sorry, I thought what I just, what I just heard was that, that there wouldn't be a, a motion to substitute here at this meeting.
The motion that she said was to, you know, discuss this with the changes discussed tonight. You know, about the parks and other counselor comments, you know, for, in two weeks.
Okay, very well.
And does our, and does our chart, point of information, does our charter, uh, Mr.'s...
We're voting for this in two weeks.
Mister City Attorney?
Voting on it for revisions.
Mister City Attorney, point of information, does our charter provide for us to be able to specifically do this? I know it was a lot of arguments from you all about the Dillon Rule and making sure that the, uh, that our charter speaks specifically to something before we can change it in ordinance. Does it speak specifically to this to allow that to be placed in?
Mister Mayor, point of order should come through the chair.
So the question is, is this ordinance gonna violate the Dillon Rule?
No, there is a, there is a state statute that specifically allows localities to adopt an ordinance to this effect.
Adopt the ordinance what?
There is a state statute that specifically allows all localities to adopt an ordinance to this effect if they so choose.
So the Dillon Rule is only applied in what, what circumstances did it apply?
Mister Mayor, point of order after something that you asked.
Your question is, when does the Dillon Rule apply? Because the Dillon Rule was given in previous times. He just stated that there is a state statute on the books that says localities have the authority to set their policy.
Oh, to set the policy?
Yes.
Right. So I was asking an additional question is, like, so when does the Dillon Rule apply? So that I can have to understand it.
There's the statute.
Go ahead.
Mister Mayor, I, as I understand the question on the floor, the question is, what is the Dillon Rule?
No, not what is the Dillon Rule. When does the Dillon Rule apply? The Dillon Rule apply in specifically regarding like when things are not in the charter? And they don't speak specifically, they're not spoken to specifically in the charter? And the argument was before from the city attorney about the Dillon Rule specifically. So I'm asking, when does the Dillon Rule apply so I can know going forward?
So in brief, the Dillon Rule stands for the proposition that a Virginia locality only has the powers that it is specifically given by statute or that is necessarily implied by the, by the explicit grants of authority. So if there is a statute, if there's a Virginia state statute that grants localities a power, it ha- they have the power to do that. Very well.
Mister Harris? We're in discussion now.
We're in discussion. Well, my discussion is, I'm opposed to this. I don't want no, I, I'm opposed to this ordinance. That's all the discussion I got. I'm, I'm, I'm the will of these people here. I'm with the will of these people here. I don't want this thing either. Excuse me.
Counselor Ellis? Counselor Ellis?
Mister Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. If, if there's gonna be a revised version of this ordinance that's gonna be considered at the next meeting, could it be publicly released prior to that so that us as the citizens can read it?
It'll be released with the agenda packet.
So, oh, the park, the park, it was the park that transferred.
You have the floor.
All right.
Mayor?
There were copies at the back table of the substitute from the public.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Ready? To, to start off with, so the revised version, I, I would like to see a revised version. This one here, we had conversation on, see, you gotta understand, I didn't see it till Friday also. I mean, so by the time y'all see it, I see it. There was no real big discussion about what we're gonna do in parks and all this kind of stuff. I mean, I, I, I heard discussion about buildings and then I saw parks and I was not in favor of, of the parks. I, I carried. My whole family carries. So, you know, I, I'm not real threatened. I mean, the only thing I'm threatened about if somebody starts shooting is I hope he can shoot well enough and I'm out of the crossfire. You know, I wanna duck. But I, I do wanna keep the safety of the employees in mind. I understand times are bad. I understand things happened in Virginia Beach and stuff like that. But at the same time, I would like to see a revised, let's go over it. At this particular time, I don't think that I could vote on this. So if, if we're gonna do a, if we're gonna do a revised, I don't mind looking at it. But at this particular time, with what I see here and what I've heard from everybody out here, I, I just, I just can't.
All right. I'm sorry. Counselor Stokes?
Um, I just wanted to make the statement that I do remember the two-way sanctuary city fight. And I remem- I mean, I brought that up in some of the conversations I've had with Ward Six people that discussed this with me. And then keeping in mind, I would like the right to carry so that if I'm on this side of the desk and you get to shoot and I get to shoot back. Also wanna say I understand what the vice mayor's concerns are. Um, Ward Six, I hear you. And so I would not be in support of anything that took away someone's constitutional right. And I'm, even though we had our big fight with the two-way sanctuary city, it was passed and I respect what its goals are. So I would not be supporting the ordinance change tonight. Ward Six, I hear you.
Counselor Day?
Um, when I saw this come out, I called people from my ward to talk to them about it and see, you know, what are your thoughts on this? How do you feel?
Let's be respectful.
And, and, um, I had several people tell me that, you know, they, they were not for the parks right off the bat. Everybody said, "No, don't, don't agree with the parks." But as far as the government buildings, the people that I talked to were in agreement with that. But I do have a point of information that I wanted to ask Mister Bissett. If something were to happen here and we didn't do something like that, would the city hold any liability?
Okay. Mister Bissett? So the question is, if something was to happen here in City Hall, like a, a mass shooting incident, and the city, you know, hadn't done anything, what's the city's liability?
Hadn't done anything is kind of a...
Well, I'm talking...
So, so the, if the, if the, if the question is, does the city face liability for not having an ordinance like this? No, it doesn't.
We have sovereign immunity. We have sovereign immunity.
Seeing no more lights for discussion, roll call please.
Counselor Ellis?
This is, this is the vote that it's gonna be brought up in two weeks. It's the revised copy.
Thank you.
Who made the motion?
If I, if I, Mister Mayor, just because I think there may have been a bit of confusion, the vote right now is to remove parks from the or- from the proposed ordinance. The ordinance is not being voted on tonight. That's later days.
A friendly, friendly amendment, if, if you're gonna do that, about the part he said about the transfer. You need to make sure it is detailed and what does that mean? Because just like you said, uh, the, there's a lot of presentations about the marina becoming a, at one time, what's that thing called they were trying to do with the marina? But anyway, that can be considered a park over there.
We're taking the parks out.
So now, are y'all doing city building as in, in here? Are you talking about in here? The whole city building, so they can't bring their...
Right.
Roll call please.
I need to know who made the motion and seconded the motion.
Uh, I believe it was, I think it was Mister Harris and then Counselor Holloway.
No, Harris, Harris made the motion to not do. He said he not doing it. He make that motion?
Okay. Okay. So do I have a motion then?
Well, I think I, I submitted the, you know, said, um, we need to entertain the substitute motion to eliminate parks and...
Okay, so you made the motion.
So I'm confused. I thought he was going forward.
No, this is being done in two weeks. It's, it's on the revised motion. Counselor Joyner ha- has made the motion and I'll second it. Roll call please.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day? Yeah. Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
It's, it's in two weeks.
Let me get some clarification because, listen, are you...
We're in the middle of roll call. We've clarified this at least three times now.
Yeah, but y'all didn't...
Please continue with the vote.
You have not clarified. You actually, you're taking away my right... Hold on. Wait a minute, Mister Mayor. You are taking away my right to understand what it is. You, you, you're literally...
We've said this over and over. Continue with the roll call.
So I have to represent my citizens.
You're gonna have to explain it to Mister Harris.
Mister Harris was not in here.
Counselor Harris?
Counselor Harris?
The motion on the floor is to, it's, the motion is for, we're gonna revote on this in two weeks and it's to remove the parks part. Mr. Harris, you're on your roll call.
Okay. Come, come back.
Shadai, please continue with the roll call.
Counselor Harris? Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Uh, no.
Motion passes five to, five to two.
Okay, moving on to our public hearings, public hearing number one. Mr. Fans, Fanshion?
Franshion. Franshion. Uh, yeah, I'm Andrew Franshion, um.
Guys, please be quiet.
I'll wait a second.
Okay, continue. Now. We moved it up. Yes, continue with the public hearing, please.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilors, uh, my name is Andrew Franshion. I am the Director of Economic Development, Housing and Environment for the Creative Planning District Commission. I've come to you with a resolution, uh, for the support of the Virginia Department of Environmental Qualities, Water Supply Planning, uh, program that they're going through. Uh, it is a regional planning program that they have changed their, uh, Virginia Administrative Code in order to push it and all the localities are required to participate in the regional supply planning. Uh, the City of Hopewell has been put into a region known as the Middle James Three Region, which is about thirteen localities that include, um, everything along Appomattox and everything around Richmond area. Um, and what the resolution basically states is that the City of Hopewell will participate in the regional supply planning and it'll allow City of Richmond to take point as the regional planning coordinator for the regional water supply plan. And that, and it was, there's been a few meetings for this, uh, already. Uh, I myself have represented the City of Hopewell as lo, as well as some members of Virginia American Water. Um, but in order for them to move forward, the City of Hopewell, um, they couldn't have a private company or the Regional Coordinating, uh, Commission sign off on it. The city needs to sign off on it. Uh, there's no cost to the city. It's basically, you're stating that you're, you support that the City of Richmond will take, take over the lead. Uh, City of Richmond was decided to take over the lead for two reasons. One, they're the largest water supplier in the region. And two, the new director of the DPU used to be the head of the DEQ's Water Supply Planning Department. So we figured he'd be the best one to do the water supply plan for the region.
Okay, alright.
Any further questions or anything?
Uh, Counselor Holloway?
We're gonna, uh, look for the, uh, resolution to be voted on tonight, correct?
Correct.
So I'd like to make a motion.
We gotta do the public hearing first.
Oh.
Alright, public hearing is now open. I don't have anyone signed up for this. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor Holloway?
I'd like to make a mo, uh, make a motion to, uh, for the resolution supporting a, a FY two dash twenty-five Water Supply Planning Grant to assist with the development of the regional, uh, Water Supply Plan as required by N B A C twenty-five seven eighty fifty.
Okay, I'll second it. Seeing no lights for discussion, roll call please.
Counselor Ellis? Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, public hearing number two, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. My first public hearing this evening relates to a conditional use permit request to construct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot parcel zero one four one two five two located on Klingman Street. The applicant is La Nova Properties LLC. Uh, the owner of this particular piece of, uh, property is Richmond Wholesale Deals LLC, located Ward Five, Zoned R Two. And, uh, again, we followed all public notice requirements as required under state law. Uh, map here on the left showing a, uh, aerial view, general location of this, uh, property and on the right is a close-in type view. Uh, R Two says that minimum lot size is seventy-five feet wide and a minimum of seventy-five hundred square feet total. This particular parcel, uh, zero one four one two five two is only fifty feet wide and four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. So the non-conformity is with both the width and the total square footage. The applicant's proposing to build a two-story, single-family dwelling that's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, one thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet. And then here are some elevations of the proposed house, uh, front and right side, uh, with the deck on the rear. This is the rear elevation and the left side. Uh, the proposed dwelling is, uh, a little bit larger than the average, single-family dwelling size in the neighborhood. Uh, vinyl siding that's being proposed for the structure is consistent with other homes and the proposed dwelling will meet all R Two, uh, district setbacks. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets all seven C U P approval criteria. So therefore, staff recommends approval of this particular C U P application with the following conditions, uh, which are our standards, the twelve-inch minimum eaves, twenty percent, uh, tree canopy, driveway of asphalt or concrete, uh, brick or stone foundation on all four sides, foundation plantings in the front, in substantial conformance with these plans as presented to you, uh, this evening. Uh, at the public hearing that we held at Planning Commission, we did have one, uh, person speak against the application, claiming that, uh, construction on this property would inhibit his access, uh, to his rear yard. Planning Commission ultimately did recommend denial of this conditional use permit request for the following two reasons. They felt like the lot was too small and the house was too large and not consistent with the neighborhood. This is a public hearing this evening, so I am, uh, requesting action from council. I'm available for any questions if you have any. I don't believe the applicant is not here this evening.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yeah, I've got a question. The, uh, Planning Commission has recommended denial.
That's correct.
You have recommended, your staff has recommended approval.
So my initial recommendation was approval. Uh, it meets our basic criteria. But Planning Commission, for these two reasons, felt like they were gonna recommend denial. So, I, and I did not change my recommendation, um, based off of Planning Commission.
Okay, uh, Counselor Stokes and then Holloway.
I had the opportunity to drive by the house. I was concerned because the back of the house bumps up against the railroad tracks.
That's correct.
It's like two steps and you on the railroad tracks. So is this a single-family dwelling?
Yes, ma'am. That's what's being proposed.
Oh.
As you can see here on this image on the right, there are other houses that.
Yeah, right there.
Back up against the.
It's not very close.
Railroad as well, so that, that's not necessarily unique to this property.
I was a little concerned, uh, about that location and that back area and, uh, single-family dwelling that may have children. Uh, that concerned me greatly, so I, I'm not. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. It, it's a tight lot.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
That is, uh, there's no question about that.
Uh, Counselor Holloway and then Day.
Uh, about a picture, I, I, you know, I'm, it doesn't look like it might be too close to the train track. Uh, it just may look like it right here, but it, either way, it is very tight.
Yeah, you gotta walk it.
I'm the, I'm the resident that complained about that.
Yeah, you gotta walk it.
Is that house.
Sir, we'll, we'll have a public.
Sir, you're gonna have a public hearing here shortly.
Alright, okay. So, now. Which size is that lot beside it? With the house, uh.
To, to the right there? It's wider. Um, I don't have the exact measurement in front of me, but based off of, um, the Klingman property's fifty feet wide. So this, the, the one tonight is, it, the one being considered this evening is fifty feet, so the one to the right of it, I would assume is probably sixty to seventy-five feet wide.
So, so it's not too much different, really?
Um. I, I guess that's a matter of opinion in some ways, you know? I don't see much difference in that personally. Um, Planning Commission saw differently, so that's why I say it's.
I mean, it, it might be generally small altogether, but I'm saying specifically comparing it to the lot that's right beside it, it doesn't seem like it's much different.
I, I would agree with you.
Yeah, and, and the other, so the issue with the lot size and it, it, what, can you go back to, go back to.
Yes, sir.
Lot and.
It's, um, I keep going the wrong way. So the R Two districts, the minimum seventy-five hundred square feet.
No, I've seen, it was two things. It was the lot and whatever.
The, the width and the total square footage were the two non-conformities.
I mean, I don't, I mean, there could be a lot of things that we, uh, have an issue, take issue with, but I, I don't think that. I mean, if them people, if, listen, if they wanna live on a super small lot, they live on a super small lot as long as it's not anything dangerous, there, there's no dangers, no dangers there. It's not, uh, sitting on, nothing else is wrong with that property, just the simple fact that these people won't, they're fine with having a small property.
It, it's, from a zoning standpoint, it's simply just, it doesn't meet the minimum standards, that's all.
That's, I mean, people coming here get C U Ps for way more difficult things.
I'm here before you multiple times.
For way more difficult things. It's just a lot size. Alright.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Day?
The, so I know that, I guess the plan was to add on to the driveway that is at the neighbor's house to accommodate having a driveway space for two vehicles like you have to do. Would that be like right in front of the house? Like, would the driveway end up being right in front of the house?
It, it would be, they would be allowed to stack it.
Okay.
You can do stacked parking, so it could be a narrow one that runs along the side. Um, it's a bit tricky and they do have a little bit, it's probably hard to see this image here, um, of the lot plan. But they do have a little bit of wiggle room in meeting the setbacks where the house could kind of slide over a little bit to make room for that driveway, to double stack on that driveway.
Is, is the reason a two-story house proposed because they can't fit a one-story on the lot appropriately? Is that why they went to a two-story?
I, I think it, uh, one-story would fit.
Okay.
Um, I wasn't given an exact reason for the, for them proposing the two-story, but I suspect that they may have taken some guidance from me that, um, C U P houses, as long as they're about, you know, the average size or larger than the surrounding ones.
Okay.
That that's a direction I've received from you as a body, that that's a desired, uh, size house for the neighborhood. So I think they took that information and came up with the two-story.
Cause I, I mean, I, I talked to a couple of people that live right in that area and they were unhappy with the fact that the house was gonna be two-story because there's no other two-stories, two-story houses right there in that area. And I think they just felt like it was gonna kind of stand out, you know, against, you know, the rest of the neighborhood and, and the types of houses that are currently there.
I get that from an aesthetic standpoint potentially.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's a valid argument, but my argument would be, um, if, if we're trying to improve housing in Hopewell overall and offer different, um, housing products for potential buyers and if we wanna elevate and uplift particular neighborhoods, this is one way that it can be done. So, I, I would argue that it's, it would not be a detriment to the neighborhood. Um, just aesthetically, it just may be different.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Holloway?
Yeah, I, I will have to, I have to, I mean, I have to agree. I mean, I'm, I think I'm just kind of a little doubtful tonight, because, I mean, when I'm hearing this counsel, you know, speak on improvements, and I remember specifically then, uh, counsel giving you that instruction as you just stated last time. This is what we would like to see. Um, everybody doesn't need land. Matter of fact, some people prefer not to have it. That's why they buy townhouses and condominiums and so forth. Um, so everybody doesn't need to have land. I mean, that lot beside it, again, isn't a, a great difference. If all the rest of the properties had ninety feet by a hundred feet be one story, one thing, but this maybe only seems like it's only ten feet more diff, in difference in size. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I think, I think if the owners of the house wanna have a small lot, I mean, let them have a small lot. I, I just don't, I, I just don't see why we, I, I, I think we, we should be here in our positions for safety purposes. Uh, you know, when, when the, when the council always get into the nooks and crannies of these things, I don't think this is why we are governing body in the first place, you know? I, I, some of these things, if there's no safety in play, I mean, safety issues here, the fire department isn't saying, or the police department isn't saying, hey, you know, this is making an issue. This is because somebody just want a smaller lot. And then we talk about an improving neighborhoods by, um, and I know that, that's something that Counselor Joyner and, uh, I mean, Vice Mayor Joyner and Mayor Parton have spoke to many times about the simple fact of increasing the housing stock and also making the neighborhoods better by going this direction. So I, I, I'm definitely for it. I mean, just because it's a little small lot, it's not tremendously smaller than the rest. I, I'm just going for it. I, I don't know if we're making a motion. Do we have a public hearing?
We got a public hearing.
Yeah.
Counselor would like to speak. Okay, alright, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, sir, would you like to speak on this topic?
I don't know if you can actually get a good understanding of the size based off of what he showed you.
Can you talk to the mic?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta have you talking to the mic and I'll, um, switch this to the.
Okay. As far as this picture goes, that's not gonna, that's not doing the justice of how small this lot actually is. You asked about the property next to it and I'm guessing you were talking about mine. My lot size is almost, is over nine thousand square feet. So, we're sitting there and now, like I said, I can show you what the actual lot looks like in case you've never been through the area.
He shows, can he show us?
Yeah, just pass it to the clerk.
I've been through the area. I guess I'm just, I never paid attention to thinking about a house.
It's, it's when you see it, you're like, what?
Very.
I mean, it, you've got a privacy fence right there, right?
And.
So that house is gonna be very close.
And that privacy fence is not gonna afford me any type of privacy with this two-story dwelling next to it.
So it's only, it'd be from there, this your property here you're talking about?
No, I'm the privacy fence.
Oh, okay, so from right here to right here?
Yes, sir.
Be where it is. And this picture, this looks like a, a driveway.
Counselor Stokes?
You wanna look at the picture?
But also, but, hold on, but also.
I've been out there.
The, but the trees here.
I drove out there.
I've driven by there. It would go into the trees too?
Either that or they're gonna have to have those trees removed.
That's what I'm saying, so they're gonna obviously have to have the trees removed so the picture doesn't depict what it would actually look like if they all let it. So the picture doesn't depict what it would actually look like if that, all that is cleared up?
No, but like I, like I was saying, as, as, as Representative Day said, I have a privacy fence. If that house goes up, the privacy that I'm afforded by that fence is eliminated. I'm, I'm a very private person. Had that house been there when I was in the market to move to Hopewell five years ago, I wouldn't have bought that house.
So then this wouldn't represent the true size because we're just saying the privacy fence is actually over the line, is it?
No, I'm not saying it's over the line, cause I replaced the fence that was torn down there, and I stayed on that line, on that line. I actually had to cut my fence for the tree that was there. But as far as anything going up in that area, it's gonna be extremely tight. And the fact that they have to butt up their driveway just to get a driveway to the neighbor, which I'm guessing they own that adjacent lot where my, my neighbors are, that, that's, that's pushing it.
So, so the driveway would have lied, the, the neighbor basically is having to get their driveway cut into because they've made their driveway over into that
That's where it's gonna have to go. According to the hearing that I was at the last time where this gentleman was, they were saying that they would have to butt the driveways up together.
Share them, it'd be one each flat.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, that, that person, that neighbor's driveway is literally over their property line. That's why they're having to do that.
No, the people that are in char- that are trying to build this house own where that house is, so they'll be connecting to the driveway that they own property that they already own. When I moved here, I was under the assumption that those particular neighbors own that house. I'm guessing they rent, I have no idea, it's not none of my business. Trying to put a two-story house that size plus the deck, and I get what you're saying as far as the, the railroad, that's gonna be close. It's gonna be close. I've had to cut through there, um, in that tree area to make repairs to my fence before, as well as to try to trim down some of the English ivy, and it's right there. Couple of steps off that deck, it's a drop right there. It's not directly onto the railroad cross, um, the railroad track, but where they have that ditch between that area and the track, that, that's gonna be pushing it.
Well, I mean, then, then we would be saying the same for the other properties as well, right?
It's gotta cut differently.
Yeah, I mean, it's cut differently, but that, his property too would be, his property too is still falling towards that. I mean, the house is not gonna be on that drop, it's the property line. People can put up a privacy fence around here as well, right?
I saw it, yeah.
So if they put a privacy fence around their lot, we can require them, if that's the case, to put a privacy fence up.
Are they gonna have enough room once that fence is up based off of code?
You got to see it.
Yeah, I, I think what needs to be done is, I think some of you guys need to go and look at it, and then we just, and we vote on this in two weeks.
Yeah, I, I think that is best, cause from here, looking at the property, I mean, looking at the property as it is, is, is one thing, but that line would also eliminate the, looking at it at the map, you gotta cut the trees down, you know, so it still won't be a I, I don't think it's, it's, it's anything wrong with it.
Okay, so let's go ahead and close this, are you interested in comments, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to table this item until the next city council? Alright, motion's been made by Councilor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Joyner, seconded by Councilor Stokes. Uh, seeing no lights for discussion, roll call, please.
Councilor Ellis?
Yes.
Councilor Day?
Yes.
Councilor Stokes?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to public hearing number three. It is a brief presentation, Mr. Ward.
Keep it brief. Uh, this evening, um, my second public hearing, your third public hearing, is a zoning amendment request. You may remember this was a request initiated by city council back in January of this year, directing staff to take a look at auto-related uses in various commercial and industrial districts and looking at the potential of adding a conditional use permit requirement to those uses. Uh, we've gone through the process, we've been through Planning Commission and a work session here, and tonight's the public hearing. Uh, again, the applicant is City of Hopewell. Uh, this particular proposed zoning amendment would affect various zoning districts that encompass wards one, two, five, six, and seven. And the amendment request would be to section A of Articles ten, eleven, eleven A, twelve, and thirteen. So, city council initiated staff to investigate options for auto-related uses by resolution that was adopted back on January fourteenth. Now, so currently, our ordinance states in B two that automobile and truck service establishments and rental agencies are permitted by right. And in B three and B four, automobile and truck sales and service establishments and rental agencies are permitted. And I just wanna differentiate that in the M one and M two, there's an additional allowance of like bodywork or, or paint, like a paint tents, paint, um, paintwork on vehicles, um, which is only permitted in M one and M two. Uh, these auto-related uses are essentially permitted in all commercial industrial districts except the B one, which is downtown. Uh, that encompasses approximately ninety-six point eight percent of, um, of all available commercial and industrial land is available for an auto-related use. So there are potential impacts that come with these auto-related uses, and there are parking issues outside, storage and display, noise and air pollution potentially, waste disposal, safety risks, aesthetic concerns, and potential increase for theft and vandalism. Uh, we did hear from one person during the public comment period at Planning Commission who was essentially against any sort of changes at this time, saying that code enforcement could handle these potential negative impacts. I just wanted to stress that any changes that are made through a zoning text amendment process would only affect new businesses that are coming in, or it could, or it would affect any existing noncon- legal nonconforming use. So that would be the quote-unquote grandfathered auto-related use that wanted to expand. The C, if this is adopted, the C U P process would kick in for both of those situations. The benefit of adding the C U P is that it'll allow public input. Uh, it's proactive mitigation instead of relying on reactive code enforcement to deal some of the potential negative impacts. It allows site-specific conditions to be addressed, and we have a better handle on parking on and off-street. Both on and off-street parking. Again, this would be an interim measure if it is adopted. Just a reminder, we are in the process of updating our entire ordinance, and of course, all these uses are being looked at very closely. So if this is adopted, this would only be in place for approximately twelve to fifteen months before the new ordinance hopefully is adopted. Planning Commission recommended approval. Um, I'm available for any questions. I know there, there were some folks here earlier who did wanna speak at the public hearing, they've left.
Yeah, the one that I had signed up was Mr. Sylvester.
Okay, um, so it's up to you, um, how, how you wanna proceed, if, this is not a time-sensitive issue, I would say necessarily. So if you did wanna take action tonight, that'd be appreciated, but if not, I would understand why, why you would.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. The only one I had signed up again was Mr. Sylvester, he's not here. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Nope. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the, um, zoning amendment as presented? Alright, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Councilor Ellis. Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Councilor Ellis?
Yes.
Councilor Day?
Yes.
Councilor Stokes?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, moving on to public hearing number four. This is the public hearing for the school board appointments. We have conducted our interviews, and the five individuals that have, um, put their applications in are Mr. Chris Reber, Mr. John Griffin, Ms. Heather Bennett, Ms. Brenda Pelham, and Ms. Carol Carr. Okay, public hearing is now open. Um, I do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone on, in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing of the five candidates? Okay, hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Uh, this will be on the agenda in two weeks for a vote. Alright, and that concludes our city council meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?